All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 25, 2023, and we're welcoming you to a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County, and we're going to start this day in our normal fashion. In Manatee County, we always start by honoring God and by honoring this great nation. So today, we have Pastor Nicholas Lee from Harvard Methodist Church, who will lead us in prayer, after which, our county commissioner and Marine Corps veteran Mike Ron will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, if you're able, please stand.
Eternal Father, God Creator, this morning, we take a brief moment to pause and give you thanks for such a beautiful day here in the county. We pause, knowing that you are present with us, and we ask that this morning, as we consider the business of the people, you would speak clearly to us so that we can do the work that needs to be done, to provide for the people of Manatee County, to bring justice, to bring peace and order, so that we can function in the way that you've called us this morning to do. God, we know that we come with different thoughts and feelings, but we pray that this morning, as we consider the business, you, in fact, would give us your heart and your mind, so that we can work together for the best for this county, at this moment, for the people. We thank you, God, for all that you've given us, and we pray that you would allow us to do the best with what we have been given today, as we consider this work. In your son's Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for your service to our community, Pastor. Commissioner, thank you for your service to our country. Mr. Washington, would you please read announcements and updates to today's agenda into the record?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Updates and changes to the agenda dated April 21st. Awards and presentations and proclamations, item number two, presentations of certificates of recognition to Dr. Deborah Gossner Vinnick. The agenda item was added to the agenda. Citizens' comments. Written correspondence was submitted by Mike Adams and Charlene Cowell. Changes to the consent agenda under the county attorney. Item number nine, adoption of resolution R-23-069 to initiate conflict resolution procedures with the Manatee County School Board with respect to the claims filed by Cynthia M. Daltry and Richard C. Daltry, and authorize the county attorney to file a crossclaim against Manatee County School Board pursuant to Florida R-CVP-1-170. The agenda item was updated to include resolution R-23-069. Item 11, Tamara Adivar versus Manatee County, case number 2020-CA-1443, motion to allow plaintiff's proposal for settlement to Manatee County to expire and take no action regarding the proposal for settlement. This agenda item was added to the agenda. Financial management, item number 15, adoption of resolution R-23-002, authorizing the issuance of the Public Utilities Revenue Improvement and Refunding Bonds Series 2023. This agenda item was updated to include Exhibit C to the resolution. Under Public Safety, item 34, execution of the memorandum of understanding for remote-site education at the Bishop Animals Shelter between the School Board of Manatee County, doing business as Manatee Technical College and Manatee County Government. This agenda item was moved to the regular portion of the agenda item as item 43. Under Public Works, item 37, adoption of ordinance 23-68 prohibiting engine compression-release braking on Talavasch Road from US 301 to Lockwood Ridge Road. This agenda item was moved to the advertised public hearing, presentation upon request, as item number 40, and updated to include the affidavit of publishing. Advertised public hearings, presentations upon request, under National Resources, item 39, adoption of ordinance 23-082, amending section 2-25-55E1 of the Manatee County Code of Ordinance to revise the terms of members of the Environmental Lands Management and Acquisition Committee, representing each county commissioner, district. This agenda item was updated to include the affidavit of publishing. Under the county administrator, under the regular agenda, item 42, discussion of veterans' transitional housing. This agenda item was updated with a replacement PowerPoint presentation and financial handout. National Resources, item 44, Environmental Lands Programs Update and Environmental Lands Management and Acquisitions Committee, LMAC, recommendations. This agenda item was updated to include written correspondence. Under Commissioner Agenda and Comments, item number 45, execution of the use agreement between the University of South Florida Board of Trustees in Manatee County, and adoption of resolution R-23-063, authorizing the conveyance of real property to the University of South Florida Board of Trustees for property located at the Crosley Estate, Bradenton, Florida, District 4. This agenda item was updated to include the use agreement, resolution-R-23-063, county deed, requests for legal services and location map. Updates to the agenda dated April 24, 2023, under Citizens' Comments, written correspondence was submitted by Diana Adams. Changes to the consent agenda, item number 10, adoption of resolution R-23-078, appointing John Mast as acting county administrator. This agenda item was updated to include resolution R-23-078. Under the regular agenda, National Resources, item 44, Environmental Lands Program Update and Environmental Lands Management and Acquisitions Committee, LMAC, recommendations. This agenda item was updated to include a revised PowerPoint presentation, candidate property summary, existing and candidate conservation land map, and additional written correspondence. Under Commissioner Agenda and Comments, item 45, execution of the use agreement between the University of South Florida Board of Trustees in Manatee County, and adoption of resolution R-23-063, authorizing the conveyance of real property to the University of South Florida Board of Trustees for property located at the Crosley Estate in Bradenton, Florida. This agenda item was deleted from the agenda. Those are all the updates, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We're now going to recess this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and we're going to open a meeting of the Port Authority of Manatee County. So the county commissioners are in recess.
And I don't need to gavel. It's fine. All right, we're opening up the monthly meeting for Seaport Manatee. This is entirely a consent agenda item, but we have the executive director, Carlos Pecares, here with us. So I will, well, we start a public comment, we never get it, so before I let you start, just I'll see, is there any public comment here for Seaport Manatee? Of course, Glenn.
I don't mean to displace you. It'll just take three minutes. I wouldn't use three minutes.
Our rules at Seaport Manatee are the same as our rules at Board of County Commissions. Please state your name and your county residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, hello.
Glenn Gibellina, for the record. Port Manatee, I've been beating this drum about renewable energy out there. We have hundreds and thousands of square feet of roof space that we're not taking advantage of. As you know, the utility rates are going up. Why not be your own power company? Why not you put up 20, 30,000 solar panels on the warehouses we rent and sell the electric to them? It's a no-brainer. You know, why would you, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars writing checks to FPL every year. There's a better way. Why would you import electric from 15, 20 miles away when you can import it 50 feet from the roof? I don't get it. Prices are down. You can get solar on your roof for a buck and a half a watt. 10 years ago, it was $15. Price of solar panels have plummeted 80% in the last five years. Let's get on board here with some renewable energy projects out there and start saving the taxpayers some money. These panels have a 25-year warranty at 90%, and they're good for another 25 years. So I encourage this board to look into a renewable energy source. You know, New Haven, East Coast, their whole port is run by solar panels. And guess what? They got cold winds, sleet, snow. They make the numbers work. LA Port, part of there is done by solar panels. They make the numbers work. We're in a sunshine state. Make the numbers work. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will close public comments. And Carlos, I'll turn it over to you to present your consent agenda. Is there any, anybody wants to pull anything from this consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, there's only one item, one consent agenda, and that's all we have at this time.
Okay, then I will entertain motions to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Ron and a second by Commissioner Satcher. Any dialogue, discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk is approved unanimously. Carlos, I'll turn it back over to you.
Excuse me, Commissioner Cruz. I'd like to vote yea as well, please. Thank you.
I had no idea she was on the Zoom.
I realize you didn't, and I apologize, but I had no way to let you know at the time.
Do you have any comments on the consent agenda?
No, sir, I'm good. I just wanted to make the vote.
All right, sounds good. So it is approved 7-0, inclusive of Commissioner Baugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The port is doing very well. We are continuing to grow the business, the footprint. The amount of customers interested in expanding at the port continues to grow, so it bodes well for the future. Just as an FYI, we're hoping to put on your calendar, May 23, back here for our May agenda items, and then, if time allows and your schedules are able to accommodate them, June 15 at the port, to do our two, you know, on the first half of the year, two meetings at the port, and hopefully two more in the fall. So, May 23, here, June 15, at the port. We'll check your calendars, so we'll see how your, you know, how your calendars look. That's it, that's all I have.
All right. Does anyone up here, any of the members, have any comments to make? Seeing none, Carlos, thank you, as always. I look forward to getting back out to the port and having our longer presentations are always entertaining and informative. But with that, if you have no further comments, commissioners have no further comments, I will close this meeting of the Port Authority.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the Board of County Commissioner meeting. Commissioners, we'll go right to consent. Are there any items that commissioners would like to have removed from today's consent agenda?
I'll remove item 10, since it's not supposed to be.
Commissioner Cruz would like to remove item 10. Are there any other items on consent that commissioners would like to remove at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
I'd just like to, maybe rather than remove, but just highlight that 28 is good news for the people of Parrish, that we've got a new contractor on Erie, and they're going to be able to actually get the job done, instead of just barrels sitting around. So I'm very excited about that, and people in the Parrish area can be excited about that as well, but I don't see any reason to actually pull it, but I appreciate you letting me comment on it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And for clarification, item number 28 is ratification of emergency guaranteed maximum price addendum to agreement, and that is construction management at-risk services for Erie Road. Yes, sir. And that's from 301, US 301 to US 301, south-north phase two, to be specific, if people are wondering. So it does connect to 301 and two places. I had to think about that for a second, but you're right, it does connect to 301 and two places. Okay. Few unique roads in this town, that being one of them. So item number 10, commissioners, you know, sort of for stability purposes, and, you know, I think it's a good idea for us to pull item 10 and hear it now. I think we should get it out of the way at the onset of the meeting. Does anyone have any objection to that? Okay, then we're going to hear item number 10, and this is essentially the county attorney's item.
Yes, sir.
So we'll go to the county attorney now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Commissioner Cruz is right, this was not, it was not my intention for item 10 to be a consent item, so there must have been a miscommunication there. I sent you all a copy of the agenda matter last night, and it was designated as a regular item. It is the adoption of resolution 23-078, appointing John D. Mast as acting county administrator, and it is a county attorney item. At the Board's April 18 regular meeting, you directed me to bring this back to you, and if adopted, this resolution would appoint Mr. Mast as acting administrator, and it would authorize the chair to execute an employment contract with him. The terms that Mr. Mast is requesting for his employment contract are summarized in the agenda item, and I briefed each of you individually about those yesterday. If you'd like me to go over any of them in detail, I'm certainly prepared to do so. And it is a board decision whether or not those terms are acceptable. The board wanted me to handle this, but I do need to say it, it's not appropriate for me to speculate which terms would receive the support of four or more commissioners and which ones would not, and I take my direction from the whole board. So I've brought this through to you, you know, so that you can make your decision on it, and typically, I don't recommend business terms to the board unless there is a significant legal interest involved. So the Board's options today are, of course, to approve and adopt the resolution and accept those proposed terms, or you could reject or modify them. You could discuss those directly with Mr. Mast, who is present here today, or you could send me back to talk to him further if the board is, you know, if they are not acceptable to the board. I do need to make you aware of a Scrivener's error in Section 2B of the resolution, which was brought to my attention by my chief assistant yesterday afternoon, which has been corrected in the final version. It has a phrase in it that says, "or the removal of, from the position of acting county administrator." That should say, "or his removal from the position of acting county administrator." And again, I have a corrected copy for the clerk if the board adopts the resolution. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz is on the board with a question. Sir?
I have lots of questions. I mean, first off, the fact this is on consent and the fact that it includes an employee contract along with the resolution, in my opinion, completely violates the entire motion that was made a week ago today. I went back and watched that. In fact, the county attorney specifically stated in that meeting that we would not be getting an employment contract. He said that we typically handle these via resolution, and an employment contract would be withheld until we had a permanent county administrator. That was clearly stated on this board. I understand that your negotiation could change that, but even the nature of the vote was a vote to authorize a resolution being prepared and negotiated. So, I mean, that right there is a question, because it doesn't sound like that's what we authorized to be done. Second, the motion specifically said that we're going to direct you to come back with options for us to discuss. The very nature of consent violates that motion in and of itself, that we're trying to put this on something that intended to avoid discussion. In fact, there was a commissioner up here who wanted all seven of us to be involved in the negotiation, but this got crammed in here. So I don't like the nature of how this kind of went through, but I want to talk about the specifics of this contract. I've said it before about timing. I talked about it last Thursday, and I meant that with, you know, good faith explanation of how things were going to work, and that was under the assumption that a new Inshram County Administrator was going to start effectively this afternoon. That's what we did with Dr. Hope's. That's what we did with Mr. Washington. That's what we did with Karen Stewart. They started immediately. And even then, I had meaningful concern about timing and its disruption in this county, because it was only going to be five to six weeks before the budget meetings, which wasn't going to be a lot of time to prepare a budget, and only like six to eight weeks before we, less than that, before we turn over the county. Now, this contract doesn't start till May 22. That's a month from now. So, one, we have an Inshram County Administrator who's basically being told to stand there and work hard to construct a budget, that he's not going to be here, in this position at least, to present, and now we have a new Inshram County Administrator starting 15 days before the first public budget meeting, that has to present a budget that isn't even being prepared by that Inshram County Administrator, in only three weeks before we turn over the entirety of this county to somebody who most likely wouldn't have had time even to introduce themselves to all the employees that they're now the boss over. This timing is incredibly terrible. This isn't like we're doing this in October at the start of a new fiscal year, and, you know, we can, we can deal with it as we get through the holiday season. This is just awful, awful timing, and I said that before. But my concern is, the nature of this contract is so out of market compared to other contracts we've presented, we're setting ourselves up to fail for the taxpayers, because when we go out and look for a new county administrator, which we are, presumably, they're going to look at this contract. They're going to look at what they're getting into. They're probably watching these meetings right now, and we're probably losing potential applicants in and of itself, but when they come in, they're going to benchmark off of this contract. We have a contract with an Inshram County Administrator who has years of experience in this county, and he's at $200,000. This is 225, plus, we pay all the benefits, plus, a car allowance. This contract is a solid 20% plus higher than the current Inshram County Administrator position that we're having, and it's higher than the last permanent county administrator we had. And to get to the 215 for Scott, we removed the car allowance, we removed the, well, I don't think he ever had the benefits clause to it, but we also removed the part where he gets an automatic pay bump if employees get pay bumps, which has been added back in here. Last year, that pay bump was 7%. That's like 15 grand on this contract, if this contract is still outstanding. This is a out-of-market contract, maybe not relative to the state of Florida, but relative to Manatee County, and no permanent county administrator is going to walk in here to negotiate in good faith and feel that they're owed a penny less than what this contract says. We're setting an anchor floor to any future negotiations, because they're not going to say, "I deserve less than the Inshram guy you just put in 90 days ago." So that's immediately costing the taxpayers money. Second, we're putting a poison pill in here, and look, I know everyone's like, "Why are you after John?" I'm not. I think John and Teresa are great people. They endorsed me in my campaign. I've already endorsed his wife and her campaign. This is not personal. This is in the best interest of the seven people up on this board, the 2,000 people working in this building, and the 400,000 people working here, that this is just a bad idea, and if we're going to do this, we need to do it the right way to set ourselves up for success in the future. And to automatically have somebody drop down to deputy county administrator upon the completion of this is basically telling any future county administrators, "You were forced to hire the former county administrator as your underling," a person who has more relationship with the staff at that point in time and more contacts in this building. It's like electing a new president and telling that president, the former president is now your vice president. Like, no, they're not going to want that to happen. That's going to hurt our ability to find the best candidate for the long term for Manatee County. I also question the legality of it, in all honesty, because Florida statute 125, whatever, 74, I think, clearly states that the county administrator has the sole authority to hire staff. So we're trying to circumvent the Florida statute by effectively hiring a deputy county administrator from this dais solely by putting him into a temporary position and then sliding him down to a position that we want him to be in, which we don't have the authority. We can put in a contract that we recommend a future county administrator, consider hiring this person, but I don't see how this sleight of hand works from a Florida statute standpoint of effectively hiring someone. I don't think this is the right time. I've said that before, and I stand by it. I don't think this is the right contract, because I think it's putting us and the taxpayers in a very bad position in the future. I think we're putting too many poison pills in here that is, you know, here's how I envision it. Someone's going to come in and want more money than we're willing to pay them because of this contract. Someone's going to come in and not want to hire somebody that we're forcing them to hire, and then we're going to lose people. And three months, six months down the road, we're all going to sit up here and go, "Well, couldn't find any qualified candidates, but we got somebody here right now. We might as well slide that person in." That's what's going to happen. We all know that's what's going to happen. That's the game that's being played here, because we're basically setting up this contract to almost ensure that our national search is unsuccessful, and then we have a convenient backstop. That's how I read this. I don't like the fact it was on consent. I don't like the fact that we negotiate an employment contract without giving the authority to the county attorney to do so, and I don't like how this contract is for the seven of us. I don't like how it is for the 2,000 people in this building. I don't like how it is for the 400,000 people in this county. This is just still a bad idea, and if we're going to do a bad idea, I don't want to do it with a bad contract. I'm hoping this contract is so intentionally bad that it gives people the ability to vote against it, honestly.
Thank you, sir. Just to be clear, commissioners, the item was not supposed to be on consent. That was a staff error, and I said, "Don't worry about it. We'll just pull it off at the beginning of the meeting."
I did bring it to your attention immediately.
You did, you did, and I told you, "Don't worry about it. We'll pull it off when the meeting starts."
Not my intention, Commissioner Cruz, and I'm sorry it happened, but it was not something, not something that happened in my office.
Yeah, it's just an error. It's not a big deal. Commissioner Bearden, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, last week, when this happened, you know, Commissioner Cruz made a point, and I got to think about that point over the weekend, and, you know, we do have budget coming up and a lot of major things that are coming down the pipeline. And, you know, looking back now, I do agree with Commissioner Cruz in regards to the statements that, you know, he was saying. And, you know, looking at this contract, right, you know, nothing against Mr. Mast, but we would be paying him, he'd be the highest-paid county administrator that we've ever had based off the stipulations that were being implemented in the contract. I mean, we're looking in a range of between $258,000 to $265,000 with all in regarding this contract, and, you know, I just don't think that it's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Manatee County regarding this. So I completely agree with you, Commissioner Cruz, in regards to the direction that you brought to the board. And so, you know, I think we definitely need to relook at this contract and make sure that, you know, we're ensuring that we're approaching this in a manner for the benefit of the taxpayers. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. So Commissioner Bearden, you and I have had our differences lately, so I want to keep this conversation as above the fray as I possibly can. this conversation as above the fray as I possibly can. I can't sit here without pointing out the fact that I negotiated the contract for the current administrator at $200,000, and the board made the decision to remove me from the negotiations, and now this is what we're faced with. So, I guess my request is that if, I want Mr. Mast here. Obviously, I'm going to give Mr. Mast two points, two bonus points here, right? The guy came in, it's called the power of ASK, right? The power of ask. He came in with a big ask, and I never knock somebody for that. I don't knock people for trying to make money and trying to make the best of their situation that they possibly can. But that said, I think we do need a board member to be involved in the negotiations to get this to a contract, to something that everybody can agree upon and something that's in the best interest of the taxpayers and Mr. Mast, to be honest. He's not walking into an ideal situation. I see that. Literally, the situation is not what it was, you know, a week ago or two weeks ago, I guess. So, I understand that. It gives the incoming more leverage. I understand that. You and Commissioner Cruz both make valid points in that potential candidates for the permanent position are watching this, and this is giving them more and more leverage as we go forward here, right? It's not putting us in a great situation with, as far as negotiating with the next permanent, and I do, I think we all see that. So, you're both right about that. Anyway, those are my comments. I don't know that I'm necessarily making a specific ask, but I am certainly going to put it out there, sir. You're next on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I could see your point, Mr. Chair, in regards to this, but it wouldn't surprise me if there was, obviously, you know, I think that everybody on this board maybe had an interview with Mr. Mast at one point in time, and it wouldn't surprise me if Mr. Mast was influenced by, you know, what to bring to the board. I mean, let's just be honest, so that, you know, the board wouldn't have the input in regards to the negotiations moving forward. And so, that wouldn't surprise me in this case, and I'm just making that assumption. So...
Well, the board has all the input in the world. I mean, that's why we're here discussing it, is for the purpose of input. There's no one else on the board at this time. Not sure where the board wants to go with it at this point. There is a, well... Sir, you're out of order. You're not recognized. Thank you. So, Commissioner Ballard, you're on the board, ma'am.
So, I do agree with some of the comments that have been made, and I also agree with Chair Van Austin Bridge that I think that we do need a little bit more board input on this contract. I don't really think it's appropriate for us to negotiate this entire contract from the dais, but I don't think that we're at a contract at this very moment that's palatable for the board and good for the taxpayers of Manatee County. That's my thought.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clegg is on the board next. Commissioner Baugh, are you there? Commissioner Baugh, are you able to hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. If you, do you want to speak? Do you want yourself on the board, I guess, is my question?
Not at this time.
Okay. It's an important discussion. I just want to make sure you're not being excluded.
I am listening to the board, and then I'll make my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clegg?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I think, look, it's very difficult for a lawyer to sit down on a contract negotiation without a client rep. I mean, I think you all are thinking the right way. If you want to, if you want to, you know, go back and talk to Mr. Mast about what is acceptable or not, I think it would be a good idea for me to have somebody that I can take with me that can be the person that can negotiate and discuss the business issues with him. It's very hard for me to do that. I've been through a number of these votes now since I've been county attorney, and this isn't the first time that something's come back and the board has said, "Well, wait a minute. That's really not what we're comfortable with." And so, this is the, that's the next step in the process, I think, if that's where the board wants to go. And I'll be happy if somebody wants to make a motion to help you craft it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I'm going to propose that if that's the direction that we go, that we send Commissioner Bearden, because...
I'll second that if that's a motion, sir.
Because he seems like the most down-the-middle on this. I clearly think even hiring a new interim is a terrible idea for the county, so I don't think I could go in in good faith. Other people are clearly far on the other side of this. I think Commissioner Bearden is the most down-the-middle, looking at things rationally person up here, and if anyone's going to negotiate this with the county attorney, I would trust him.
Yeah, if you make a motion, if you'd word a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah, I will make a motion that if we bring, if this is going back, we don't know what's going to happen with this vote, so I can't, so...
Well, there's no motion on the floor, sir.
Well, there is a motion on the floor. Well, no one's made it.
There's no motion on the floor.
You're correct, you're correct.
Would you like me to help you all craft one?
Yeah, just craft something that says you're going to work with Jason.
The motion would be to authorize Commissioner Bearden to work with the county attorney to enter into discussions with Mr. Mast and bring back options to the board for his employment as acting county administrator.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to direct the county attorney and Commissioner Bearden to enter into negotiations with Mr. Mast to be the acting county administrator. I mean, we're pretty far along here, to be honest. We have a meeting on Thursday. Commissioner Bearden, is there any, does your schedule allow for you to work that out tomorrow and come back on Thursday? Okay. Good, good, because I think sooner the, you know, sooner the better, right? Okay, so we'll open this up to public comment then. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to comment on the board directing Commissioner Bearden and the county attorney to enter into negotiations with Mr. Mast to be the acting county administrator? So, sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to address the board regarding the motion on the floor.
My name's Martin Hyde. I live just south of Manatee at the northern end of Sarasota County. Nearly 165 years ago, Abraham Lincoln said in a speech at the Illinois Republican Convention that "A house divided against itself cannot stand." He was paraphrasing Matthew 12:25, which says, "Every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation, and every city or house divided against itself will not stand." The county commission has no political opposition on it, but it does have seven commissioners fighting each other instead of fighting for the citizens of Manatee County.
Sir, is this regarding the motion on the floor?
Absolutely.
Okay, carry on.
If you'll just bear with me. Removing and then reinstating the ceremonial chair of this board was the latest of many petulant squabbles. The vote to negotiate the hire of an interim county administrator, who would be the third boss staff have had in less than three months, would be laughable if it wasn't so outrageous. To hire even temporarily a man who is currently president of one of the largest builder developer advocacy groups in the region is like hiring a bank robber to run a bank. The biggest issues consistently in this region in citizen surveys are traffic congestion and overdevelopment, but six of you voted to negotiate with someone who's not only a personal friend to some of you, but an advocate for more building and development. None of you would have been elected on a platform of corruption and cronyism, and certainly none of you will get reelected by handing over the administrative reins of the county to someone who actively promotes the interests of the few, by which I mean developers, over the many which lest you forget are the 412,000 people who live in Manatee County. I'm not buying the upon further reflection justification for a vault face last week on the board chair, and neither are many people. Sunshine law requires government to be done in the sunshine, not through cutouts working for one interest or another. That having been said, none of you has more authority than another. If staff has been unresponsive to you, the answer is demand of the administrator. They do so, not to go hire one of your pals. County business is not about, for the most part, national policy, but rather local impact, which is arguably more important. Giving this county administrator role to a development advocate is not just putting a fox in the hen house, it's saying we don't care about the hens, meaning citizens, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that our masters are happy with us, and we know who your masters are. I'd say do better, as surely you can't do worse. Say no to this bizarre hire and start fighting for the citizens and not property developers.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on the motion on the floor? Yes, sir. Please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on the motion on the floor.
Kevin Wright, Manatee County. First, I'll stand in support of Citizen Martin Hyde, and I'll stand in support of everything that Commissioner George Cruz had to say. I don't hear any music in the background right now, so that means the music stopped, and you all are in a seat, and I assume that Commissioner Baugh is sitting someplace, wherever she's at. I see that acting county administrator Lee Washington is in a seat. I see that the commissioner, the chair, is in the chair seat right now, so for today, 25th of April, we're set. Nobody will make the presumption that you all are beholden to developers. We don't make that presumption, but we all know that developers have an inordinate influence over elections and over county government. That's a given. That's the way things work. So, we have a healthy disinterest, and we take a very close look when we look at things that may serve their interest. We championed each of you, by we, meaning those that voted for you in the election, and we champion you regularly on many of the things that you attempt to do and the work that you do now that you're elected. Some of you in your rookie season, some of you are a little bit more seasoned than that. After November of last year, those of you that put you in the seat that you're in, we were not seeking to have conformity, nor did we want to have absence of disagreement. Quite the contrary. We like that. That's good. In America, that's good. But what we did not want to see was to see a continuation of infighting, which has been going on for years. We did not want to see any of you failing to listen to each other for the purpose of understanding rather than coming up with your argument or defense of your own established position. All too often, that is what we have seen. So, and what we mostly wanted was to see that the sensibilities of those, your bosses, we, your employers, would be adhered to. I would have to say that individually, we still continue to champion. Collectively, you have failed. Collectively, you have failed. The process has failed. You are not exercising the process, and leadership is what needs to make the process work correctly. At this time and for this person, the timing, as Commissioner Cruz pointed out, could not be any worse. It may well be that Mr. Mast is extraordinarily capable at doing the duties of county administrator, interim administrator. We've got somebody that can carry us through. Let the process work the way it was. You're wasting time, you're wasting energy for that. Work on your process. Work on your communications with one another and with the staff. We don't observe that occurring. You and those that advocate for you on a regular basis will be best served, as will the 400-plus thousand citizens of Manatee County. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on the motion on the floor, which is to direct Commissioner Bearden and the county attorney to negotiate with Mr. Mast for an interim county attorney contract? First and last name, county of residence, three minutes, sir.
Glenn Gibellino, Glenn Gibellino for the record. Have you cut my mic off already? Glenn Gibellino for the record. I go along with everyone that spoke up here. George, great points. Here's the problem. You promised the citizens of Manatee County a national search. That's what you told us, and it currently is in the process of doing that. What is the message you're sending to all these people that want to look for this job that you're negotiating a contract for a year, and then maybe will think about you? We're spending money on a professional vetting company to look for the best administrator in the country. When you sidestep the process and say, "We're just going to go off the reservation and do this," you corrupt the system. You corrupt the process. You marginalize your integrity. When you come back with a process like this, it's a slap in the face, not only to the citizens, but to an outstanding employee, Lee Washington, that you have here. This is insane, insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. You need to pull this item. There's what it says, okay? So, we're going to, we're going to give him, over the summer, everything to do with the county. He doesn't, he doesn't have the experience. Now, look, I like John. You know, he's on the Affordable Housing Board, Sarasota County, Manatee, Sarasota County, the city of Sarasota, carpentry shop. I like a lot of things about him. I don't like the way this is going down, and I don't think the rest of these citizens in this country, in this county, appreciate you sidestepping the process of what we're doing. He wants to be county administrator. God bless him. Throw his head in the ring with the professional vetting company that we have, and if he comes out as top dog, give him the job. I don't get it. I don't get it. You just, you are vet, you are sidestepping the process. You're going to bring in more chaos and calamity with this short-term budget meeting coming up. Absolutely insane. This is not in the best interest of the citizens. If you guys want to be one-term wonders, that's the direction you're going to take if you approve this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, ma'am. Please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on the motion on the floor.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Jessie, and I live in Manatee County. It turns out I didn't need to be here today. We've had some great speakers today, and Commissioner Cruz, I think, really covered everything really well, that a lot of us are sitting at home really concerned about. I don't think that we should be negotiating a contract with Mr. Mast at this point, because the public hasn't had the opportunity to weigh in. Last week, this item wasn't on the agenda, and it came up. There was no ability for public comment. Last night, or sometime yesterday, I was at a Lightning game when I realized this was on the agenda. Mr. Mast's salary negotiations are on the agenda. Again, consent, you know, accidentally or whatnot, but there was no time for public comment. Those of us that made it today either, you know, can sit at home all day and just show up when we want, or had already made the conscious decision to be here. There needs to be an opportunity for the public to weigh in on a huge decision like this. And there's also a lack of public trust right now. I know a couple months ago, I believe it was the Bradenton Times, that reported that Mr. Mast was being considered for this role, and there were three commissioners sitting up there that said this was fake news, that this wasn't true, that Mr. Mast didn't live in the county. And now, here we are today, looking to hire him as an interim administrator. I know there's a difference, you know, it's interim, it's not full-time, but as we've all seen in the past, an interim often becomes the sitting county administrator for the long term. And so, I just think it's really important. We have seven conservatives sitting up here that we championed. The people who've spoken today are all from the same party as you. We championed a lot of you up here. We want you up here, and to be a beacon of hope in our county as conservatives, but instead, we're seeing a lack of trust build, and people are questioning whether this is the party that they can trust, that this party has integrity and the honor that's needed to do this job. And we just ask that you consider these things and the optics that are going on with the musical chairs up here and with the sleight of hands. When it appears that we have to start taking rumors seriously, that there are commissioners coloring outside the lines and making decisions, staff decisions that aren't theirs, normally these are things, you know, people are making a mountain out of a molehill. We wouldn't listen, but now no one knows what to listen to, because it seems that we're being told different things, and then we're told, "Oh, don't worry about it," and then it's up here without notice. So, we just ask that you really give the public a time to comment and to give you our thoughts on these issues. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak or address the board on the motion on the floor? Okay. Seeing no one coming forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, let me close public comment. We'll close public comment, and then we will go to Commissioner Baugh. The speaking order is Baugh, Ron, Cruz, and Bearden. Commissioner Baugh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've sat here, and I've listened to all of you. I've sat here, and I've listened to the citizens, and I want to thank all the citizens, including Martin Hyde, for coming forward with his comments. But I think there are some things that need to be said, and I think I probably am the one that should say them. First of all, let's talk about the Board of County Commissioners for a second. This is a great board. Everyone sitting up there, I'm not on the dais this morning, but I'm in the meeting, and everyone up there has one thing at heart that they want to do, and that's be a good commissioner to all the residents of Manatee County, and they all want to make good decisions. Some have a little bit more experience than others, but most don't have a lot of experience. They are learning as they go. Our chairman has been a great chairman for the last year and a half. In case people forget, I'm the one that nominated him to be Chair this year. There has been some issues, but that doesn't mean that this board is in any way not to be respected. They do have integrity. They're good commissioners, and our chairman is a good chairman. There has been differences. As I said in the meeting, in our last meeting, I would only consider it if it would bring unity to the board, because I knew that there were those that had issues. I've heard them, we've all heard them, we all know. It's not a new issue. The problem, and I'm going to go here, so just, Mr. Chairman, if you could just give me a little bit of leadway there, I'd appreciate it. The chairman is trying to do what the majority of the board members want done. The reason that I think most of us voted the other day to just have the county attorney do it is because we didn't want any more issues taking place, and we knew that the county attorney could handle this and get it done and bring it back to our board. And it sounds like to me the majority of the issue is the salary, and I understand, but at the same time, you know, we do have someone here who has experience, believe it or not, more so than our interim does right now. So, you know, our interim has been wonderful. He took this on, you know, without even questioning it. He just took it on. So he's done the best that he could. He's done a good job. He does stick with, I can see Mike Ron back there, I see him very seriously here. You know, the administrator has tried to do a great job. Sometimes staff, it's tough for an interim administrator, particularly one that's worked here for many years. I think that Mr. Washington started right before I got elected, if I'm not mistaken. He's a good man. There's no bad things to be said about the Board of County Commissioners or the interim administrator. I think probably for me, and I can only speak for me, and, you know, I heard Martin Hyde bring up sunshine. It's always about sunshine. I don't know of any sunshine that's been broken, but I will tell you that the bottom line is, is that we need a strong interim right now. I do believe that. So, you know, I also heard that, you know, Willie's good friends with some of us. Well, you know what? I don't know that I would say good friends. I would say that he has been a partner in helping with Manatee County in different areas. He's obviously very active in Sarasota, more so in Sarasota politically, I might add. However, to hear that, you know, this board is trying to pull something over on somebody, you know, that, "Oh, we said he wasn't going to be the administrator." Well, we didn't lie. He's not going to be the administrator. He can't qualify to be the administrator. He can work in Manatee County, but he cannot be the county administrator. He does not reside in Manatee County, and I can tell you, he will not reside in Manatee County. He's right over the line, actually. So according to Florida statute, he cannot, and he will not be the permanent administrator. So let's not get things blown out of proportion here. You've heard the majority of the board. We do feel that there needs to be a change. I think we've all stated that in one way or another. I think what I'm hearing the board say, and I stand by this board 100%, is that the $25,000 extra might be an issue. Okay. You know what? As we did with Scott Hope's, do we need to recess the meeting and that be discussed with Mr. Mast, who I heard the chairman say is in the audience? I've not talked to him or seen him, obviously, but I'm hearing he's there. You know, is it possible? I don't know. I think it is a great idea to have Commissioner Bearden speak with him, with the county attorney. I think that's a step in the right direction, and I support that motion. But I think a lot of the comments that are being thrown out there are, to be honest, not fair to this board. And I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about the other members. It's not fair. They've done a thorough job, they've worked hard, and it's a good board. So show them the respect that they have earned, because it might be things behind the scenes that maybe you guys don't know about the citizens. They work this every day. We all do. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Speaking order is Ron, Cruz, and Bearden. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Baugh, thank you for your comments. I'm supporting this motion to bring Commissioner Bearden into the process. I don't have any problem with that. What I do have a problem with are some of the comments that were made insinuating that we're somehow on the take or being taken advantage of or anything like that. I take this job very seriously when I ran. And, you know, you're talking about development. We're going to have over 500,000 residents in this county in seven years. We better be prepared for it. If we're not, we're going to have urban sprawl. It'll be worse than it is today. So we're talking about the developers. Yes, we worked at the developers to come up with a plan, and we'll be sending out our comprehensive plan to everybody out there, all the stakeholders out there to review, our comprehensive plan. So what I want in an administrator is that we need to have a subject matter expert, you know, in position to help a new permanent administrator there, to help doing some of the heavy lifting, along with our great developmental services staff and Courtney DePaul and her team, and with Charlie Bishop and Public Works. We need somebody out there that can mentor, has been through the process before, holds a master's degree, you know, has experience in Sarasota County government, so he knows how the government works. He knows, and he's been involved in this government many times, he's stayed before this board, given sworn testimony on issues that concern us all: growth, infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, and how we can move our public works forward. So, Mr. Chair, I thank you very much. I'll support this motion, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Sir, please have a seat. No, please have a seat, sir. The meeting is in progress, you're disrupting a public meeting. Sit down. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz, and then Commissioner Bearden.
Yeah, a week ago, this was being done because the current interim county administrator wasn't getting us more information. Now it's being done because we need a subject expert on development. Yeah, I nominated Commissioner Bearden to do this, as opposed to me myself, because it doesn't matter what comes back from my contract. I'm not going to support it because I don't support the concept of changing out our interim county administrator at this point in time. That's a fundamental belief I have, even if somebody said, "I will do this," as our former county administrator pretended to say, "do it for free." Like, it's still not in the best interest of Manatee County to change anybody out. But people, you know, people have been burned before here, and I was on the board, and I was, and I made votes to support a national search last time this came up and lost those votes, and we didn't do a national search last time. So you can excuse people if you're going to say, "I don't appreciate these comments." Their comments are based on fact. Their comments are based on history, and we build the history that they base their impression of this board on. So I don't fault them for thinking something is potentially going to happen because it has in the past. If you're so damn sure that this new interim county administrator is not going to be our permanent county administrator, put that in the contract. Slap that in that contract, that the interim county administrator being hired is prohibited from applying for or accepting the permanent county administrator role in Manatee County. Slap it in there to show everybody out here that that's not the intent of this position in any way, shape, or form, and never will be the position. Put it in there.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I want to make sure everybody knows that we will be doing that national search, and I will be interviewing people for that position, for that permanent position. We needed to bring Mr. Mast in. In my opinion, I looked at us bringing Mr. Mast in because, one, he has an MPA. I don't feel as if our structure is aligned for this organization in order for the Board of County Commissioners to maximize the management moving forward. And when I had a discussion with Mr. Mast, that was one thing that we spoke about, was how are we going to reorganize the organization? Because right now, what's, how it's being organized is just not working. So with his expertise and him coming on board, he was going to, one of the things was he was going to be able to help with was a reorganization of the whole organization. What I mean by that is, I look at things from a military standpoint. CO, XO, company commanders, so on, so that we can manage this process in a whole lot smoother, a whole lot better way. Right now, it's not working. I just want the public to know that. So, and if it's not working, guess what? It's costing us millions upon millions of dollars every day that we can't get this right. So that's why this is necessary, this is important for us to do this. So with his expertise, having that MPA degree, right, he's going to be able to help with that. But as the rest of the board said, we'll put it in the contract where he's not going to be the permanent county administrator. First off, his wife is running in Sarasota County, and if she happens to win, they can't move out of Sarasota County. Okay? So I want the public to understand that this is the reason why our process is thinking in regards to moving forward with Mr. Mast, a possibility of moving forward with Mr. Mast. So that's my thinking behind it. We're in an immediate, important timeframe right now to ensure that we get this done.
Thank you, sir. There's no one else on the board. We've held public comment. Commissioner Baugh, did you have any statement you'd like to make before we hold the vote?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we can, Commissioners, we can cast our votes at this time. Commissioner Baugh, how do you vote? Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, the motion passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Three minutes till. We will move on then to awards presentations and proclamations. We'll start, number one is adoption, we'll start with a motion to adopt proclamations at this time. A motion by Commissioner Ron to adopt, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner Baugh?
Aye, yes, sorry.
Madam Clerk, that's right. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. We'll start with the first proclamation, which is Arbor Day. Commissioner Bearden will be presenting. Adoption of proclamation designating April 28, 2023 as National Arbor Day in Manatee
So I get to present National Arbor Day. Awesome. Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this day, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut, heating, and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they're planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that April 28, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as National Arbor Day in Manatee County, Florida. All citizens are urged to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program, and all citizens are urged to plant trees to promote the well-being of present and future generations and enhance our community. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 25th day of April, 2023. Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, Chair Kevin Van Oosterbridge.
Thank you, sir. Who is here to accept the proclamation?
I guess I was, yeah.
All right. Step right up to the microphone, sir, and say a couple of words. You certainly have the correct outfit. I had a feeling you were the guy.
Oh, yeah. It has to be me. So, yeah, as we plan for celebrating Arbor Day, I think it's important to reflect on the benefits that trees provide in natural areas and in the urban hardscapes. And I think as we plan for the future, it will be important to work collectively and to embrace modern urban forestry infrastructure to ensure that we have a vigorous, diverse urban canopy moving forward. So that's it, yeah. Happy Arbor Day, guys. Thanks.
All right, yes, happy Arbor Day. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hunsicker.
Thank you. And thank you, that was Richard Larson with the Forestry Service, and I wanted to also compliment the board and their support that you have given the Natural Resources Department, the Sports and Leisure Services Department, and property management maintenance department in supporting a tree canopy throughout Manatee County. I say with some degree of pride that while Nebraska planted 1 million trees on that day of proclamation, you have allowed us to plant 1.4 million trees at Duett alone within Manatee County. So we're taking our strides, and we're taking our roles as well, and thank you again for your support throughout the year.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. All right. Our next is a presentation, and it is a presentation of certificate of recognition to Dr. Deborah Gonchar-Vinick. And Commissioner Ballard will be presenting.
So today, we do have a certificate of recognition from the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, which is presented to Dr. Deborah Gonchar-Vinick for presenting and sharing the documentary to the Manatee County community addressing opioid addiction and the disparity toward women titled "Attention Must Be Paid" on April 27, 2023, at the Manatee County Boys and Girls Club, for raising awareness to the cause and impact opioids have on our local community and the struggles faced through the documentary and study of the lives of those impacted and their families, for raising the level of consciousness to the need of funding and accessibility of Narcan as a form of support to those in crisis, with the understanding that every life counts. This certificate is presented to Dr. Deborah Gonchar-Vinick this 25th day of April, 2023, in recognition of her many contributions to our community, and I will say, as I say often, working in the world of child welfare, I've seen firsthand the impact that opioids have had on women and young mothers in our community, and thank you to Dr. Gonchar-Vinick for raising awareness on this important issue.
Thank you.
Are you here to accept? Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to say a few words?
Just a couple, if it's okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So indeed, on April 27, this upcoming Thursday, at 6 o'clock at the Boys and Girls Club on 30th Street, we'll be hosting the video, that she, documentary that she has put together on the access for women specifically, and we invite everyone to be there. It is definitely going to be an opportunity for us as an organization and as a community to reflect on this topic, and the opportunity for folks to be able to have dialogue and to take, you know, some real necessary and needed action, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. And thanks to the Commissioners, all the Commissioners, for supporting us in this endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ballard. Okay. We will then move on to citizen comments on future agenda items. There's a 30-minute maximum for this, so if there is anyone who would like to come forward to speak, we have three people who have signed up, starting with Advocate Glenn Gibellina. Is he gone? Okay, well, then we will move on to Denise Elzwick. So future agenda items is for comments on items that are not on today's agenda, but they may appear before this board on a future agenda. So like the other items, you'll have three minutes to address the board on something that may or appear before the board, or you would like to see appear before the board on a future agenda. If you are here to speak on a specific agenda item, we will call your item, we will call public comment when we deal with your item. Ma'am, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
Denise Elzwick, and I live in Manatee County. I've been here, living here since 1979, raised my children and my grandchildren, and I am happy to speak about this issue. Basically, I want to thank the board and recognize the fact that you make difficult decisions and you have a challenging job, especially in this area. And that area is the environmental concerns and the water quality of the water in our county. And so what I would request is that for any comprehensive plan or code changes, that you would put the environment first and err on the side of caution, because what you leave as a legacy will go on for our children and our grandchildren, and just think about that when you're making those decisions, and I know that you'll do the right thing. And that's it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Andrew Griffin? I don't see her here. Andrew Griffin? Okay. Then we'll open this up to the floor. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to address the board on a future agenda? Mr. Gibellina, you are here.
I did sign up.
You did sign up. I called your name, sir.
Oh, I was out, I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
First and last name, your county of residence, three minutes.
For the record, Glenn Gibellina. I sent you all this email that I put on the board trying to go-
Need the overhead displayed. Thank you.
Always try to give you guys a heads up. So we'll talk about parking. The B O C C should collaborate with N D C on the post office. They got a 99-year lease, a 10 bucks a year. What a sweet deal that was for them with the city. So you should negotiate with them. The current garage, tear it all down, get the largest footprint as you can, do some mixed juice on the floor, four to six levels of parking, affordable housing on the top. Let's talk about the jail. We were ready to move forward to do that to transitional housing for vets. Back in 2016, Bernard Carr came through and said, you know what? We could put affordable rental apartments there. I looked at that thing. They spent about 25,000 bucks putting that together. And it was only shot down because of the security system that the judges didn't feel comfortable with. But we should go back and put affordable housing in the jail. It's doable. They had the plans. I sent it to all you guys a couple of years ago. And his last line was, he hopes to bring affordable housing to bring the Williams Homes. We should be able to work where we live. You wonder why we got a traffic jam? That's why. Renewable energy policy, where is it? Because I haven't seen it. Tiny homes, let's talk about that. You know, it amazes me, we don't have any contingencies. You guys can rezone 5,000 houses in a heartbeat, and we can't get tiny homes on an infill lot. So why don't we let, here, let me, so. Help me understand the logic on the tiny homes. If someone can build, the upper photo is an eight-bath, six-bedroom, 5,000-square-foot house. But on the same lot, we can't put six affordable tiny homes that use less resources under the same thing. The large house, three-quarter-inch waterline, sewer, septic, the whole nine yards. You're not putting any more when you put six tiny houses. Those people want to be able to live affordably. That's why they live in tiny houses. And I think you should let the neighbors decide. We got a lot, we have an acre lot, oh, you're going to devalue us. Well, guess what? If I go to them and say, you got your choice, neighbors, I'm going to put an eight-bedroom, eight-bath house and make it a party Airbnb 24/7? I'll disrupt your neighborhood? Or we can put six tiny homes in and put affordable housing, seniors, folks that work at home. We need form-based code. You need to bend a little bit so these damn people have a place to live affordably. And we're not there yet. We haven't been there. For the record, Glenn Gibellina.
Thank you, sir. Sometimes I find it really hard to argue with you. Is there anyone else opening this up to the floor? Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak or address the board on a future agenda item? Ma'am, first and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
Good morning. Stacy Jessie, Manatee County. And I just realized today is May 25. If you don't know, it's a perfect date. The weather's not too hot, it's not too cold, and all you need is light jacket. And if you've never seen that movie, then you're missing out. Commissioner Ballard got it. I just wanted to talk again about accountability and transparency. We'd like to see more public notice. There have been a lot of things showing up on the agenda that aren't out there in a timely manner for people to give written comment or for people to plan in their schedules to get here. Rules and procedures for the Board of County Commissioners. It says in 4.4.4, "Items not on the agenda. Matters that do not require separate public notice may, without objection of the majority of the commissioners present, be considered and acted upon at any regular or special board meeting pursuant to an amendment to the agenda adopted by a majority vote of the board. Commissioners should not, however, bring matters forward for action by the board without placing them on the agenda pursuant to Section 4.4.2, except when there is an urgent and unforeseeable need for board action." And so there's just a lot of concern. I know that sometimes things come up and there's no time, but it feels like a lot of these things should be noticed so that we can weigh in, so that you can hear what constituents think, what people want to write in and say. And so that was my only comment, just that if we could find a way to really give timely notice so that people can comment, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board? Yes, sir. This is your opportunity on an item that you'd like to see the board take up on a future agenda. First, please say your first and last name and what county you live in.
I live in-
Manatee, yes, sir.
Manatee County. And the reason why I'm here, for the same reason I've been here the last three and a half years. And I don't see why you guys don't give up and do what you're supposed to do. Do your job. Your job. Sir, can you please explain to me what the law on fences are? I have a paper that you denied me the last time because I had it on the phone. Now, I went upstairs the last time. I came down, I was not allowed to see. Can you read this to yourself? What does it say? Please explain to me what the fence law is and swales. This is upstairs. I got it from upstairs. What does it mean? Please tell me. Nobody talked. You guys make the law, and I went upstairs to get the law, now you guys don't know what the hell is going on. I want to know, as a citizen, as an American citizen, for 48 years, I'm ashamed to be in front of you that you don't even know the law. I am ashamed. What are you? A soldier? Soldier, what's the other soldier? You guys are soldier of the country? And you not have an answer for me? Where do I get this answer, sir? Where do I go? I'm entitled. I have rights. Where do I go, sir? Chair? Number one? Where do I go? There's no answer from you?
Sir, you've been here six times. You know the board does not dialogue with you during, you have a Q and A session during your comment.
Okay, then you tell me. Where's my commissioner? Why can't he do his job? My commissioner, he chose to be the commissioner. I didn't choose him. Why can't he do his job, then? Why can't he tell me? What can I do in my backyard? Where is the law? Where do I get the law? Right here. And now what? You don't care. You don't need to answer, right? What a bunch of morons. You bunch of morons.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. You are a moron.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else?
Moron.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close citizen comment on future agenda items, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And we'll need a motion pulled up to approve consent minus item number 10, which was removed and voted on separately. So we need a motion to approve consent minus item 10. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ballard. I'll second it, because everybody's asleep. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge. So we'll open public comment for consent items. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to make public comment on consent at this time? Anyone who would like to make public comment on the consent agenda? All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment on consent. There's no one on the board for discussion or debate, so we can cast our votes on consent now, minus item number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, so it passes unanimously, it passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero with Commissioner Ron absent. Okay. That takes care of consent. There's a lot on consent, so give me just a second here. Okay. We will then move on. We have completed J and K, so we will move on to L, which is public hearings, presentation upon request. We'll start with natural resources. This is adoption of ordinance 23-082, amending section 2-25-55E1 of the Manatee County Code of Ordinances to revise the terms of members of the Environmental Lands Management and Acquisition Committee representing each county commissioner, district. This is presentation upon request. Do we want a quick overview or a quick explanation for the public? I think it's a good idea. Mr. Hunsicker, if you just give us the synopsis, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Charlie Hunsicker, Director of Parkson. Natural Resources Department, non-natural resources department. I wanted to give you an idea that this ordinance coming forward with commission request to amend our LMAC staffing and volunteer position organization. At the, excuse me, let me have my thoughts here for a second. At the- Sorry.
So my understanding is in a nut, well, Commissioner Cruz, why don't you take it?
Yeah, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, just to speed this along since it's upon request, is we have a lot of people, 15 people on the LMAC board, seven of them are appointed individually by the seven Board of County Commissioners. We get to pick anybody we want within our district, myself and Commissioner Bearden get to pick anyone in the county. When we first structured this, because that was a new piece to it, we didn't consider the terms of our seats. So there are certain people on the LMAC board today that were appointed by people who are no longer on this LMAC board, and some of the newer commissioners wanted the ability to select their own person for their own seat. So we were going to modify the ordinance to make the seats more coterminous with the seats on this board, although they're not 100% because it's a max three-year term for the LMAC board and is max four-year term here. So there's still some cleanup, but that's the gist of what this is.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
And it included the word coterminous, so you can't go wrong. Okay. Is there any discussion on that? I mean, it was kind of cut and dry. We've discussed it before. No? Okay. Commissioner Baugh, do you have any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 40 on today's agenda? Item number 40, public comment. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment. And there's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes.
I'm a yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of six to zero with Commissioner Ron absent. I apologize. The motion was to approve was made by Commissioner Satcher, and it was seconded by Commissioner Bearden. Move on to item number 41. Thank you, Mr. Hunsicker. Move on to item number 41, adoption of ordinance 23-68 prohibiting engine compression release braking on Televast Road from US 301 to Lockwood Ridge Road. Presentation upon request. Does anyone need a presentation on this?
I will always vote for this.
Okay.
I already made a motion.
So a motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Cruz. It has been seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 41 on today's agenda, which is prohibiting engine compression release braking on Televast from 301 to Lockwood Ridge? Sir, first and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes to address the board on this item.
Glenn Gibellina, for the record. So I did look over that ordinance. I'm a little confused, you know, as you pass these things in different areas, or you get complaints from neighbors, and that's why you pass it. Wouldn't it be easier just to make it countywide and just approve the places they can do that? Right? I mean, we're piecemealing this, everybody comes and does a complaint. Just make it countywide.
Second.
Okay.
We've done dialogue during public comment. Is there, is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on item number 41 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. Mr. Davis, I'm going to ask you to come down. Mr. Davis, I'm going to ask you to come down to the microphone. Mr. Cruz, Commissioner Cruz is on the board. He's probably going to ask the same exact thing I'm wanting to ask. We'll go to Commissioner Cruz.
I just, you could talk, it's going to be the same thing. Can we look into this? Can we just look into making this countywide and have people come to us and selectively allow for it?
Yes, it's something we've considered at a staff level. We need to look into it a little bit. There are certain roads where we, for example, the state highway system where we can't regulate it, but I mean, we can craft our code to recognize that. The question we've struggled with internally is, is how do you choose when to post and not to post and make sure everybody knows, you know, this is a no-jake braking county, is basically what we'd be telling.
It would have to be presented to us to post as opposed to what we're doing now is presenting to us what not to and to remove, correct?
Right now, the default is, people should take, if people were polite, they would take into consideration where they're operating their vehicles, and they wouldn't do jake braking in residential areas. And so right now, there's no restriction anywhere except those locations that we've listed by ordinance. And so every time we bring one of these to you, it's to identify a road segment and specific limits where the jake braking is not allowed.
Commissioner Cruz, if I may, I think what you're wanting is, you would like staff to, or Clark, to develop a map essentially of the routes, arterials, and, you know, major connectors where thoroughfares, where jake braking is allowed, but say overall, we're a blanket no jake brake county with the exception of these thoroughfares. That's generally the direction you want to go. Mr. Clegg, I see you're on the board, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not sure we can do that because of the issue that Clark has identified. When you get into court on these issues, judges often scrutinize whether or not the signage on the roads has put people on notice. And that's, I think, the issue that staff has struggled with. So we'd have to figure out practically how we could provide the signage for that and meet the standard to which judges hold us.
That may be the case. I'm just looking for them to look into it.
I understand. Yes, sir.
So could we, without a vote, could you accept this as direction from the board unless there is-
Sure, to look into it. I just wanted the board to be aware there could be a legal issue.
Right, for you and Clark to work on that and get back to us?
Sure.
Okay. Any objection? Okay. Then Clark, I'm sure you have nothing to do with your day, so now you'll keep yourself entertained with jake braking.
Yes.
Please don't let it interfere with the progress of road building or road expansion. All right. Thank you, sir. Then we've held public comment. There's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes now. Commissioner Baugh?
I am a yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Baugh votes yes. The motion, by the way, was to approve by Commissioner Cruz, was seconded by Commissioner Satcher. The other commissioners are yeses as well, and it is approved unanimously by a vote of six to zero with Commissioner Ron absent. Yes, so the next item will be probably lengthy, and it's 10:23, so we will take a 10-minute recess at this time. We're in recess. Along here through our, our regular meeting today, we are on number, item, item number, excuse me, 42, which is an administrator item. It's discussion of veteran transitional housing. And I will turn this item over to our deputy administrator, excuse me, our acting county administrator, Mr. Lee Washington. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this item has been one that we've talked about for quite some time in, in an effort to address the, the board's concern as well as the community's concern over affordable housing and homelessness, but specific to this item, veteran housing. We do have the organizations of Tunnels to Towers and US Vets to present formally to the entire board their idea of bringing housing for homeless veterans to Manatee County. We also have in support of this item, Manatee County staff from FMD and property management. So, I'd like to now turn it over to Mr. Gavin Naples, Tunnels to Towers Foundation.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Commission, thank you very much for allowing us the time to speak on this issue. Our foundation, the Tunnel to Towers Foundation began out of the wake of the 9/11 terrorist attacks on New York City. Firefighter Stephen Siller was one of 12 and an orphan himself, who was off-duty the morning of September 11th. He got the call that the first tower had been hit, and he drove his car to the base of the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel in Brooklyn, downtown Brooklyn, which was closed to vehicular traffic. He got out of his car, put 63 pounds of gear onto his back, and ran nearly five miles through the tunnel into the south tower and died saving others in the south tower and was never recovered. From that sacrifice, over the last 20 years, the Tunnel to Towers Foundation has provided over 1,000 homes to our nation's heroes, our catastrophically injured service members all throughout the nation, the families of fallen first responders, which encompass police officers, firefighters, and EMT workers, as well as the families of Gold Star members with small children who don't return home from war. Our newest program seeks to eradicate homelessness and those veterans that are at risk of homelessness, nearly 38,000 nationwide, and our approach is two-pronged. Our foundation has identified key metro areas throughout the United States where the rates of homelessness and in turn veteran homelessness are highest, and we are developing campuses and communities for permanent supportive housing, safe and dignified quality affordable housing, as well as wraparound 24/7 supportive services that address the root causes of veteran homelessness. We found very early on, it's not enough to just provide a housing accommodation to a veteran in need. You need to address these root causes to effectively rehabilitate and reintegrate veterans back into society. That is our ultimate objective here. Outside of the key metro areas where we're developing these campuses, we have an internal team of case managers where anywhere in the United States where a veteran is experiencing homelessness, they can call our team. We will provide them with financial assistance to get them housed in safe and dignified housing accommodations, work with the local VA and applicable jurisdictions to get them their vouchers that they need for long-term sustainable housing. And once that crisis element has been lifted from their life temporarily and they can take a deep breath, we've aggregated a national resource network of VA agents and public and private organizations and attorneys and landlords and mental health counselors and employment specialists that can work to help these veterans with those root causes. And it's on a case-by-case basis, and we diagnose these root causes for the veteran and work to, to overcome those barriers that they experience to reintegrating them into civilian life. So, with that, our plan as it pertains to Bradenton, the property at 4530 West 66th Street on Bradenton, here is the site plan in which we are proposing an 84-unit modular complex that we will construct for permanent housing for veterans. On the first floor, there will be the comprehensive supportive service component implemented by our service partners, US Vets, 24/7 security at the site, and then a development of comfort homes around the site, what you know as tiny homes. These are about twice the size, 500 square feet in aggregate for permanent housing for veterans. So, just to assuage any concerns as to the caliber, the caliber or quality of what our organizations provide or the track record of each, these are some national joint projects between Tunnel to Towers and US Vets. In West Los Angeles, California, on March Air Force Base, the Veterans Collective, which is US Vets, Thomas Safran Associates, and Century Housing alongside the VA, has revitalized a campus previously deeded by Abraham Lincoln to the VA back in the 1800s that will, once completed, be the largest site in the United States for homeless veterans, housing over 3,000 homeless veterans with 24/7 supportive services. This is the full campus of West LA. In Phoenix, Arizona, through our partners with US Vets, we're revitalizing 150-room hotel in the Phoenix, Arizona area for permanent housing and some transitional housing with supportive service model for veterans. These are the interior renderings. The quality as to the construction is always consistent with what Tunnel to Towers provides. In Houston, Texas, this is a hotel that we're revitalizing. These images were taken about six months ago, and we're anticipating completing this project in August of this year. We will provide permanent housing as well as some transitional for hundreds of veterans in the Houston area. These are the interior renderings of what the sites will be, the permanent housing with the addition of kitchenettes. Everyone has their own bathroom. And the interior common area spaces where the supportive service offices will take place, the wraparound supportive services implemented by US Vets. The interior schematic design of the hotel, this will mimic the 84-unit complex we're proposing in Bradenton with permanent residential housing on the top floors, and then the first floor is a complete suite of the supportive services for employment, family reintegration, mental health counseling, rehabilitation, and all of the other supportive services that the veteran needs. This is what we've been approved for in Houston, Texas. The left side of the screen is the campus of comfort homes that we are going to be implementing within the next year. These comfort homes are geared towards permanent housing as well as housing for an older class of veteran. They may have a little bit more difficulty reintegrating into society and are looking for a permanent place of safe and dignity, safety and dignity to call home, as well as, you know, the proximity to the supportive services that are directly onsite. This is a US Vets site in Riverside, California, on March Air Force Base, provided housing for hundreds of veterans currently on the existing building. This is what we're proposing and what we're implementing now on a fourth phase of the campus, be 44 of these quote-unquote comfort homes, as well as a modularly constructed building in the, in the center for the supportive service component. There's some renderings of what the homes will ultimately look like. And this is the image of the comfort home once completed. I'm now going to turn it over to the COO of US Vets, Darryl Vincent, to discuss the supportive service housing model implemented by US Vets.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. It's my extreme pleasure to be here this afternoon. I actually flew in from Hawaii last, the last couple of days. I'm Hawaii resident, and we have one of our programs out there. My boss is Steve Peck, Gregory Peck's son. He's a Marine Corps veteran, so am I, and Marines always take the toughest duty, so I took Hawaii to be the one that I did. US Vets has been around for 30 years. We consider us, we're the number-one veteran homeless service provider in the nation. I'm sorry, Darryl Vincent, Chief Operating Officer of US Vets. We're the number-one and the largest homeless veteran service provider in the nation. Our job is to work ourselves out of a job. And before I get into the slides, I want to make clear, I think we all can agree for veterans and families of veterans, we all suffer in dignity when our women and men are sleeping on the same streets that he or she was once asked to defend, and our job is to make sure that never happens again. So, it started 30 years ago with Judge Harry Purgerson, who was a retired WWII veteran. He wanted to help veterans, and he got a college campus in He wanted to help veterans, and he got a college campus in Inglewood, California with a developer, and they decided to do services. In order to do those services, they discovered they needed a nonprofit arm to get grants. And after that, the momentum blew up that we were able to go in different locations that I'll talk about in a minute. And we serve more than five thousand five hundred veterans on any given night are sleeping on our campuses across the nation. Our mission and core values, we make sure that we want to eradicate homelessness among veterans. We want to instill hope, embody loyalty, prioritize our partnerships, and we want to make sure that we pursue excellence. We'll talk about all the services we do, but we believe our number-one service is instilling hope. Our locations are as such, Inglewood, California, where it started, Long Beach, California, Houston, Texas, Las Vegas, Nevada, Phoenix, Arizona, Prescott, Arizona, Barbers Point, Hawaii, Inland Empire, Washington, D.C., Y9 Hawaii, we have a patriotic hall, Richmond, Virginia, West Los Angeles, and Ventura, California. I have the honor to serve over the executive directors of each one of these locations and to visit these locations to ensure the operations are operating correctly for our transitional and permanent housing for veterans in the community. So our program service model is that we have residential services and non-residential programs. In interest of time, I won't read over every single one, but to give you a synopsis, our residential programs have transitional structure programs that allow veteran to enter who are experiencing homelessness and get the treatment they need, whether it be mental health, substance abuse, getting back to work, whatever their need is, we triage them and do that. Although this project is not transitional housing, it's important to know that those services are always offered to those in transitional or permanent housing. We have a women's program across the campuses. We have men's programs across the campuses. Emergency housing, we can triage veterans and they don't know what the next step is, but they can stay with us overnight so they can get off the streets. We take a housing-first approach. We have permanent supportive housing, which is what this project is, and we have long-term supportive housing. We also do prevention. A veteran who needs to pay their rent living in their house, they can't pay it, we can help pay their rent and case manage them so they don't have to become homeless. We can continue to tackle homelessness, but we also have to tackle by prevention so we can cut off the faucet of veterans experiencing homelessness. We make sure we do workforce development. Every year, we employ over eight hundred to a thousand veterans across the nation. Sometimes the misnomer is all veterans are not going back to work or disabled of mental health and substance abuse. We make it a priority to get veterans back on their feet and get them back into employment. We also make sure that we do veterans-on-point. Women's veterans-on-point is our digital outreach to people. In this new day age, we have to make sure that veterans can reach us online and get with us to get those counseling services that they still need. And then we have after-care programs. After-care, so any veteran in our program can actually get care after they leave our programs. All of these services I'm saying are encompasses on our campuses and would be in this project even if it wasn't transitional housing. So our services are as such. We call it a continuum of care, outreach. I think everyone thinks a traditional outreach of going out into the communities and finding veterans that are homeless or at risk of homelessness. That is correct. But outreach is also reaching out to veterans, getting out of the military that are making a transition. We see many veterans that are getting out at their first enlistment or even after retiring need to transition to back into civilian society and have a job that could sustain them, have a home that can sustain them. Our job is to reach out to them digitally and by going out and reaching communities and working with the bases to ensure the veterans know where they can go when they get out of the military so they do not experience homelessness. We have case management where they're assigned a social worker, such as myself, and can work with the veteran to ensure their needs are being met. In addition to employment assistance, benefits assistance, education, financial, legal advocacy, we make sure that we have medical care by contracting with CNA, certified nurses assistants, and community partners to come in and take care of those veterans that have that need. We take care of the basic need support. Most importantly, we are working where they live. So we want to make sure that we're there to support them in all their needs, and all the services you see listed are what we consider to be wraparound services. In short, we make a campus approach. So in this project, it's not just us on the campuses, the veterans helping one another. No matter what branch they were in, they have a commonality of going through a branch of service, whether they served in combat or not. So putting them together and having us facilitate that process and readapting them to a structured way of living but living independently allows them to work with each other with peer-to-peer support. We have a saying, leave no veteran behind, leave no soldier behind, leave no Marine Corps person behind. The reality is we want to make sure that each veteran is supporting each other in this campus to ensure that they're getting the services they need so they can live and sustain themselves. We do this through a therapeutic community approach where they have a veteran council, they participate in their recovery. We don't do things to them or for them, we do things with them. That means they are taking, empower themselves, because the best way to take away someone's dignity is to do for them what they can do for themselves. So we want to facilitate the process of them taking care of themselves on this campus. We want to make sure that we are outcome-driven. Everyone that comes to our campus, we want to ensure that they stay in their campus, they're paying their rent, and they're participating in the employment and actually uplifting the community they live. Many of the reasons why people sometimes are against these projects, because they believe it brings the value down, they believe it brings crime or brings drug addiction and mental health. When we go into communities, we get involved with the neighborhood board, we get involved with the police, we get involved with the fire station, we get involved with the VA, we get involved with the political to ensure that we're having a safe community and veterans are policing each other, for lack of a better word. They're taking care of each other on the campus with the twenty-four-seven care that the staff is providing. We do it from a client-centered approach, which means their thoughts, their beliefs, their feelings come first, and then we provide that structure around them to ensure that they do what they need to do. I won't list off all the partnerships, but every community we go into, we ensure that we go at every campus, we do partnerships. We have major partnerships across the nation with Home Depot, different foundations, Winter Warriors Project, obviously our number-one partner is Tunnel to Towers when it comes to this development. Every, every entity we go to, we partner with the Department of Veteran Affairs to make sure we have grants and they're accessing the services. If anyone, I know we have veterans on the commission and probably in the audience. We all know that sometimes navigating the VA can be a challenge, to say the least. Our job is to make sure that they can navigate that system. We have, we're able to make calls to those people and get them in to get their appointments, to make sure that we drive them to their appointments and make sure they're keeping their appointments. One of the biggest savings we see is when veterans stop using the emergency room as their primary care physicians. When people are experiencing homelessness or at risk in homelessness, sometimes some simple prevention of medical care that we provide in conjunction with the VA can bring the cost down dramatically in cities and counties that are existing, so they don't use the emergency room just as a place to get help when they can do preventive things for high blood pressure, diabetes, wound care, and all those type of things that go on with us day-to-day where we see our primary care physician for those things. So our approach is making sure they have those services. Since nineteen ninety-three, we have engaged over a hundred and seventy-nine thousand veterans through outreach and have sixty-seven thousand veterans have placed in the home and seventeen thousand veterans into employment. So it's not just about rehabilitation with substance abuse and mental health, it's actually getting back to gainful employment, employment as well. We've had nationwide impact, the sitting in your packet of how many veterans we serve on a nightly basis, how many meals we serve, all those substantive things that keep the veteran employed and make sure that they are taking care of themselves. And then our agency outcomes, every year, although we can talk about the outputs, I think it's important to have the outcomes. And I want to focus just on a few things in the slide if I can have your attention to this. Forget all the numbers and all the stuff that says all the services we got. We're talking about permanent supportive housing for this project. In every one of those cases, it's over ninety percent retain their permanent housing. That means when they move into our housing, they stay in their housing and they pay their rent in their housing until the ultimate transition, then we absolutely have the next room for them to come in and move on to veterans and get the care. It is important that we just don't put people in housing, but we wrap the services around them so they can stay in their housing. We will continue our mission until no veteran is sleeping on the streets that he or she was once asked to defend. This project will allow us to house veterans with a partnership with Tunnel to Towers, put them in a permanent housing setting like they have a lease like any other person sitting in this room. It's a step up. It's not just for homeless veterans, it's for at-risk veterans as well. Many veterans are couch surfing, sleeping place to place. It'd be nice for us to give them a home. It'd be a mixed milieu. It's not just homeless veterans who we want to serve ultimately, but it's at-risk veterans as well, because you want to have a mixture, just like any other community. U.S. Vets will stay in this partnership, and we make sure that we have the proper staff onboard twenty-four-seven, a project director, clinical social workers, case management and partnerships, to ensure that we're up and holding our end of the bargain, to make sure these veterans are taken care of in such a beautiful facility that Tunnel to Towers would be working with you on hopefully to make available for these veterans. I want to thank you for your time, and obviously we'll be answering any questions as deemed necessary.
Yes, sir, thank you. Does that conclude the presentation?
It does not, Mr. Chair. If the board has questions for these agencies before staff steps up, we can do that, it's really up to the board.
I think, I think we should, yes, sir. So Commissioner Cruz, you're first on the board.
I don't have questions specific to them, no.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions, I'm next on the board. So, one would be, does MacDill offer anything similar to this, MacDill Air Force Base? You mentioned that other air force, that other military bases offer, you know, land for similar programs. I was wondering, is there anything offered at MacDill?
In terms of MacDill, not that we're aware of, correct?
Okay. Will there be any sort of residency requirement, meaning Manatee County residency requirement involved?
Clear, you know, as we've discussed, we want to go where the, the need is greatest. There's not necessarily a residency requirement as to that. We want to obviously maximize the utilization of the site and provide housing for as many individuals as we can within, you know, the confines of what the campus entails.
Okay, in terms of need, what is the need in Manatee County? Do we have a census of number of how many homeless veterans we have?
So there's over, to my last understanding, there's over twenty-four hundred homeless veterans in the state of Florida, and with the concentration of Manatee County and surrounding areas, it's in the hundreds, over two hundred, I believe.
Okay. So let's, let's leave out the word requirement then, and say preferential or preference to Manatee County residents. Is there any sort of, I mean, it's, it's your platform, right? It's your, it's your organization, so I'm asking you, when you go in, I can't be the first community to ask this question, right? When you come into our community, will the residents of our community receive any sort of preference over folks who are moving here, who are essentially moving here for the program, which I have nothing against? But my question is, is, I want to make sure that my residents are served first. I represent them, that's my, my job. So what, what can you do to make me feel better?
No, no, absolutely. Clearly, this is why, you know, we've chosen this area and, and because this is where the need is. So yes, you know, obviously it will be preference, and then if we've accomplished our mission and there's still spaces available, we will, we will then branch out.
Okay, so we're gonna, the idea would be to start with Manatee County residents and then branch out, what, to contiguous counties or statewide? I mean, what is, what is the plan?
No, contiguous counties as, as the need arises, but yes, to answer your question, Manatee will be.
Okay, and then you, you mentioned rent as well. Can you explain how you've, you've set that up? Is rent for only those who are in permanent housing? Is it for those who are in transitional housing? And then how are you coming up with this number?
So I'll, I'll give a brief overview and then I'll turn it over to Darryl. The structure is, and we've been working with Manatee County as to, you know, affordable housing designation to stay within those confines. The veteran is expected to pay thirty percent of their income, whether that's twenty dollars a month or seven hundred dollars a month, and then we would stay within whatever vouchers are released by the county or applicable jurisdiction to cover that deficit within the guidelines, you know, of affordable housing. If a veteran comes in with absolutely no income, the foundation has the ability to provide housing to them, you know, for nothing, and then work with them to get, you know, their, their available vouchers, and there's no retroactive payment, you know, required for that four- or five-month period where they weren't paying. So, so to answer your question simpler, it's thirty percent, no matter what that number is, and then whatever applicable voucher, you know, comes with them would cover the deficit.
Okay, and total number of units, transition, and I think you had five hundred permanent, is that, did I hear that correct? How many units per, how many permanent units do you have? And then how many transitional units? That's my question.
So, so for this site, it would be an aggregate of a hundred and twenty-two permanent. This is all going to be permanent housing. So there's eighty-four units in the multifamily or the multi-unit building, and then there's thirty-eight of these comfort tiny homes.
Okay.
I'd just like to also add, in terms of the rental, sir, is that once we come to the county, it's our job to bring those resources we do have nationally. So we get national grants, and U.S. Vets is able to parlay our experience that we come in here and start getting those grants and working with other providers here. So some veterans should be able to pay on their own, so you have those ones that are more independent. Others are doing subsidies, such as Gavin talked about. And then we bring grants in that allow us to move people in, pay their rent, take, keep case, case, case manage them as well, and then they transition off of that and start paying on their own.
And outside of my, my residency, you know, sort of request for preference, is, is preference given for any other stipulations, say elderly, say, you know, whatever your, your physical or mental health may be, I mean, what's, what sort of other, you know, your ability to work? And, and my only concern is I, I don't want to see able-bodied, working-age, you know, you know, young, single men having preferential treatment over, say, someone who is, you know, much more elderly and unable to work.
Well, there's different, depending on the structure of it and working with Tunnel to Towers, many different campuses take many different approaches. So in West L.A.V.A., it's specifically targeted because the west one of the buildings are for elderly, sixty-two and over, with a mental health diagnosis, and we have to target that. In this project, whether there's specific requirements or not, what we try to do is do what the biggest need is. If that's the need in terms of elderly, severely mentally ill, substance abuse, but what we also like to do is have a mix. So it's not just one population, but it's a mix of population. That way you can have a, people helping each other out. So I would imagine for this project, speaking for U.S. Vets, we usually have a thing we call the assessment tool. And the assessment tool tells us what's the greatest need. And the one scoring in that assessment tool would allow us to say, well, we're going to prioritize these people versus just first come, first served. We always do that at all our campuses across the nation. And we do that in conjunction with the continuum of care. I'm quite sure there's many homeless providers already. We will be working with them on what is the need, what do we need to do this project for, what's the best suited for this? So we will want to make sure that we take care of that, because we agree with that. We want to make sure the people that need to access this are, and we could still help those other people in the community living individual units in the community, which we do across the nation as well.
Do you allow for community involvement, meaning, you know, could, could residents of this community volunteer at the facility?
That's the therapeutic community approach. Thank you for asking that question. We believe that they should be done with them, active participants, working, helping us with the twenty-four-seven coverage. We call it big brother, big system. As soon as they walk into the project, hey, here's someone that can help you navigate around there. We take volunteers in the community and with them. We want them to own that. We also have a client council, so a veteran council. They get elected, become council, they get to bring their concerns with us so they can help things solve with us versus against us.
Okay, good, I'm glad, I just, this is a really like welcoming, loving, caring community. I can look around the room and I can see people in this room, in the audience, who I know would want to volunteer to help. So y'all are very well-prepared. I'm impressed by, by the structure of your organization. I am a supporter of this. It's just the devils are always in the details, right? That's how, kind of how it works. So I appreciate your answering my questions. The speaking order is Bearden, Washington, and Satcher. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you all for coming up here and traveling such a long ways to give us a amazing presentation today. I just have a few questions. And these questions come from actual veterans that I know who have had experiences typically within your Houston facility. So what I was told is that, and, and he was a prime example of this, was that, that you guys were getting a lot of people from out of state that were moving into the facilities in Houston. And that how you guys essentially bring in your income is off of the veteran vouchers, right, that are allocated to the actual veterans that are out there, and that's how you guys are able to provide the, to provide the actual services that you guys, you know, how you operate your services. So the, what I'm being told is that the main focus seemed to be just to get a veteran qualified for HUD vouchers and the housing, and not so much for the rehab or the proper transition. Is that, is that correct?
Can we restate the question again, please, sir?
So the main focus is to qualify a veteran who can essentially get the veteran housing voucher, right? And not so much on the rehab or the proper transition of the actual veteran itself.
Oh, yeah, so let me, I think it's better to explain the voucher system. So first, the voucher system is from the Department of Veteran Affairs, it's not us. So they have to get assessed by the VA, the VA does the voucher, U.S. Vets is not involved in that process.
Got it.
At our Houston campus, much like Tunnel to Towers would be with us, the landlord, which is Cloudbreak out there, they're in charge of their units, which is the permanent housing units, and the VA works with them to put them in there. We merely get Cloudbreak contracts with us to provide the ancillary services for them. So in this approach, the difference between this and that is we're working for Tunnel to Towers that's actually taking the approach of, we want you involved in that process about who's coming in and how you're doing that. In Houston, while Cloudbreak used to be our partner, they're just our landlord now. So our process is to give the services to them, but the voucher goes from the VA to that property management. Our job is just to service the veteran that comes in. So our number-one job is rehabilitation.
Got it. So tell me what happens if that veteran no longer gets a voucher?
So two things. If a veteran does not have a voucher, we have the program that we, I briefly skimmed If a veteran does not have a voucher, we have the program that we, I briefly skimmed over. It's called Supportive Service Veterans and Families Grant. So say a veteran comes in, he just doesn't qualify for a voucher, can't have a voucher, for whatever reason, doesn't have a voucher. We're able to take him, put him into a permanent housing unit, whether it be at our campus or even in the community, pay his deposit, first and last month's rent, and pay the rent for up to a year until we transition them off there by working with them through rehabilitation process. That's the kind of grants, and I'm quite sure there's probably that grant out here somewhere. But if not, that's the grants that we use to help those that do not get vouchers that run through us, not through the property.
Got it. And so I, I could see where, you know, this could potentially help, you know, some veterans. My only concern behind this is the drug and the alcohol abuse that is being done within this facility. Now, the, the property that's being proposed essentially, you know, I don't necessarily think that would be the right place for something like this. But, you know, my, I, I have concerns in regards to people coming in from out of state, out of cities that aren't, you know, Manatee County residents. And then we create, something happens to this veteran and all of a sudden, you know, they're out on the street again, which tip, which happens, right, a lot. And then now we've just increased our homeless population another 250 or to 500 on the, on the, on this, and, you know, increased our homeless situation. And that's a concern of mine. Can you help me with that?
Sure. So as I started off, although I'm a native New Yorker, I've been living in Hawaii for the last 30 years. I can, I can assure you that Hawaii is a great destination when homeless people want to travel and say, hey, we're going to come to Hawaii because we can sleep on the beaches. We can sleep there and be, it's not as, it's a, I think a friendly town. And we get a lot of people in and a lot of the Hawaii, which is obviously not the continental United States, they are very territorial when it comes to, we want to help our people that are on the state and our people flying just to become homeless. So I totally understand your concerns. And the way we address those concerns in Hawaii is what the commissioner brought up earlier about how we first designate who is the greatest need and who are residing there, who establish, who has residency there. The VA has to take the state, the stance when they're running our programs, not the permanent housing. It's the programs. People come in, they have to make the determination whether they're eligible to come access this service, although we encourage people to stay where they are with their services. With permanent housing, we get to set the bar, which was proposed about preference of saying, let's treat the ones that are in Manatee County first. Let's make sure we ensure we're taking care of those. So we're not encouraging other people to be displaced and come out and become homeless. There's, used to be myths about social workers in other states, not myths, myths in reality, about actually flying people out to Hawaii just to be homeless and to other places. And we've learned to work with the other communities and counties in the mainland, we call it from Hawaii, and say, do not send the people here to be homeless. It's a high cost of living. We're going to take care of the Hawaii people first. Now, we will never deny someone services when they come to us as a veteran, regardless of where they're from. But we work very diligently to ensure that the people that are living in that county are served first and foremost. So we, we share your concerns because importing homelessness does not change anything. All it does is make one place to the other. We're not solving anything.
Yeah. It, so that's why, it's funny you talk about Hawaii because I actually, when I got out of the Marines, I actually moved to Hawaii. Speaking from somebody who has been homeless at one point or another, at one time in my life, I can see in that this program could be good, but I, but I don't necessarily think it's the fix to the specific issue. And my concerns are that our homeless population would increase with a program such as this because we would be the only one in the state of Florida to have this facility essentially, right? And with that being said, once the word got out, we would be getting homeless veterans all over the state to come here. And if something were to happen to those homeless veterans to where maybe the services did not fix the root of the issue, we would have more homeless veterans out on the street.
So just to that point, just to clarify, there are other organizations in the state of Florida that tackle this issue. St. Vincent de Paul being one of the largest, has permanent housing along the south region, regions of Florida. To your point, and really the second prong of our program, why we developed it, is because we found that in the more rural places or outside these key metro areas that we've identified, you, you can't utilize a build it and they will come model. Eight or nine times out of 10, a veteran is not amenable to leaving their place where they're comfortable, even if they are homeless. So again, you know, we, we've, we've diagnosed where the need is greatest. It's Manatee County. And be, this is why the partnership between Tunnel to Towers and US Vets works so well because obviously US Vets has been, you know, has an extensive and very great track record of providing supportive services over a 30-year period. And Tunnel to Towers is primarily, you know, one of the largest developers of nonprofit housing. But the, the, the point is that this is where the need is. And, and because we're not Tunnel to Towers, not as beholden to the receipt of government funds as other organizations are, we are able to be flexible and nimble and work around the confines that other ones may be, you know, restricted by. You know, with that, Tunnel to Towers Foundation has one of the highest charity ratings of any organization in, in the nation for transparency. 95 cents of every dollar that's donated goes to our programs. So with that and the gracious, you know, donations that come through our, our benefactors and our sponsors, we are able to be a little bit more nimble, as we said. And while we were extremely excited to work with the counties and applicable jurisdictions, we aren't beholden to other sort of strictures that may force a project to not be optimal if they are, you know, in receipt of those funds.
So you say that Manatee County has the greatest need of the homeless veterans situation. And I'm trying to figure out why Manatee County has the biggest need when we have cities such as Jacksonville, Miami, that have a larger population opposed to Manatee County. There's counties out there that literally have 1.5 million, 2 million people plus. So explain to me why you believe that Manatee County has the greatest need.
So we've done research as to the state of Florida, and it turns out that Fort Lauderdale and along that coast, as well as, you know, Manatee County and surrounding areas, do have the highest concentrations of homeless. I would attribute it personally, I guess, to the boom of Sarasota and the west coast of Florida over the last few years. But, you know, based on the research that we've conducted, those are the two largest areas in need.
Okay. Did you want to say something, sir?
Sure. In all of our locations, except Los Angeles, that has the, one of the biggest problems when it comes to veterans experiencing homelessness. Every time we build a location, there's been a reduction in homelessness when it comes to that. Because what happens is the answer to the evidence-based practice.
Are you saying that a reduction in homelessness, the overall number of homelessness has been, okay?
Correct. So when I, 20 years ago, when I first started working in this, there was over 250,000 homeless veterans experiencing homelessness across the nation. That number is now down to 38,000. That was attributed to all the focus that was done under the previous administration, under Obama's administration, that put a lot of resources into what you're hearing right now. Permanent housing, supportive service veterans. Veterans homelessness was one of the agendas of the National Coalition of Homelessness to take that down. Because the idea is that we can do veterans, we could then translate that to the civilian population. It's a smaller population we can do. So building, renovating, making existing affordable housing is the answer to ending homelessness along with services. You can't have one without the other. You have, and we will never build our way out of this problem. What we have to do is get existing places that are willing to rent to people that will used to experience homeless. And we have to have the campuses for those that need the communal living. And that's how we tackle homelessness with the services. It's not substance abuse. It's not mental health. Homelessness is caused by lack of affordable housing and lack of income.
Well, so you're saying to me that because of the programs in LA, that the, not just the veteran homeless situation, but the overall homeless situation actually decreased?
LA is the one that, the one anomaly that we've seen increase. I mean, not stabilized at some point. It got a big drop. And then recently, LA is still experiencing problems right now.
Okay. Because I just got back from California and specifically for this subject. And I recognize that LA actually increased 5.1% and $500 million was spent in LA on their homeless situation. So obviously, money wasn't the answer to fix the solution.
Correct.
Right? You know, I, I just have a lot of concerns in regards to this program. I'm, I mean, I'm taking down my notes from a good friend of mine who was a captain in the Marine Corps and fought in Afghanistan, Purple Heart Ener. And he pretty much told me that if I were to vote, I would vote no granting them money based off the experience in Houston. They received money from the VA to take care of veterans, but didn't do much to help veterans. So that's my only, that's my only concern is that I've had, I've actually had friends who have gone through the program, but didn't necessarily feel like they got the help that they needed. And this is a captain in the Marine Corps that, you know, had moved from Kansas to Houston to be in the facility. And so those are my only issues with this particular project. And knowing the fact that I have friends that have actually been through this program, that, that would essentially, maybe we need to relook or have a, a different conversation on the, on where we need to place this facility if we happen to decide we want to do it in Manatee County.
Yes, sir. Can I ask a quick question, just for clarification? Your friend used the pronoun "they." Was he referring to this organization?
West Texas.
Okay. Same organization. Okay. Thank you, sir. Not to get into pronouns, but that was the, that, that is what, grammatically speaking, that is what it is before that became such a hot-button issue. Satcher, Cruz, and Washington are next. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for getting, just for information, so with a program like this, actually, the chair was wondering, so are, are kids usually allowed? Would they be allowed if someone has children?
So starting off this project, no, this is not, this is going to be single individuals of coming into the project. Is this, have we had programs in the nation, across the nation, that allow children? Yes, we usually grow into that if that's going to ever be a, something that needs to be done. But for right now, no.
Okay. So be single people. Gotcha. And then I think for, if I understand the situation, Tunnel to Towers is basically, their commitment is to build this facility. Now, would they pretty much after it is done and finished, be outside of it, would no longer have a day-to-day participation?
No. So this is a program that we've implemented. And obviously, we were able to accelerate our efforts and, and implement this supportive service component with you, with our partnership with US Vets. But we want to funnel as many different resources as possible to these sites, to a point that was made earlier. Just based on what we've done prior to this program, we have a litany of people that reach out to our foundation that are interested in helping and diverting their resources to helping, you know, our mission, electricians, plumbers, contractors. And we want to funnel those entrepreneurship opportunities, those apprentice opportunities toward these, towards these sites to buttress what US Vets' model is currently. But we have onsite staff, Tunnel to Towers, that are watching, you know, and overseeing the property management aspect of the site, the safety and security of the site alongside US Vets supportive service model.
Okay. So, so you would stay involved and oversee other organizations coming in? The one that you know you work with well and would expect to take on the majority of that was US Vets. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Because we, because y'all actually represent two different organizations. One project, two organizations. And you foresee it being the majority of services provided coming from US Vets? I mean, obviously, something could change, but that's what you're looking at. And then you would oversee for the, have most of the authority over the property or the authority over the property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so with that, can you, I think you touched on it, but I just wanted to hear, is, is this a different, fundamentally different setup than some of the ones you've done in the past? Is there a reason why you think this will work better? Do you have any locations that have operated this specific way before? Because obviously, from the commission, you're asking for a commitment. And I think that, you know, that's something that we, I mean, we're looking at it today. So obviously, it's something that we're at least interested in and open to. But we want to address different concerns. We don't want to be the model of how to fail at this, right? We want to be the model of how to succeed at something like this. So can you put any of those, you know, concerns to bed or?
Absolutely. I'll start by saying that it, it comes down to detail, as has been discussed here. Throughout our programs, our three premier programs at the Tunnel to Towers Foundation, we'll start with our catastrophically injured smart home program. Those are for wounded warriors that experience a litany of different catastrophic injuries. We create homes no matter the location. We allow the veteran to choose where they live and we tailor the construction of the home to their needs. The level of detail is right down to the brick, completely accessible. Everything's controlled by an iPad tailored to the needs of the veteran. And that's how we will implement this program tailored to the needs of each specific veteran. As to our partnership with US Vets, to assuage some concerns as it relates to the Houston facility, that may have come down to some sort of, you know, funding issues that may have existed in the past. But that's why this joint partnership is going to be so fruitful because Tunnel to Towers has the ability to come in and rejuvenate and revitalize these properties in the Houston property that you, that you've just seen. That is going to be our new site, joint site at Houston and the renderings which you've been provided for, which will create a much more therapeutic place for rehabilitation. And it, it's, you know, the first component of it, as I've said, is the level of detail. And the second is the consistency of service and making sure that we perpetually are vigilant as to the status. We don't want to come in here and have a project that looks nice and shiny for the first couple of months and then three or four years down the road, there's, there's problems. We are, as I said, eternally vigilant on all of our programs, this one in particular. It's one that's very near and dear to our hearts as an organization and our boards. And we will implement it to the same quality and standards that the Tunnel to Towers Foundation is known for.
Well, go ahead.
And we've never, US Vets, in terms of this being a pilot, we have never opened a facility that we've had to close. So I just wanted to address that concern that we've opened facilities and partnerships. We're now partnering with Tunnel to Towers. We bring the funding with us. And I want to make sure we own any experience a veteran has. We're not pretending that some veterans may walk away dissatisfied. It's our job to figure that out. It's our job to meet with, I would love to meet with that captain. My job is to go around to each one of the locations and make sure we're operating effectively. We know that we will sometimes not meet their need because of whatever reason may have happened, but it's our job to do that. You know, usually when we do these presentations, I know there's limited time, we would always have a story of someone speaking of what they've done. And then you always can have a story of people that didn't get that experience. It is our job not to judge them. Our job, all feelings are valid. And our job is to make sure that we can have them have the best experience in that. We're transparent. We own it. And if it's something we can do better, we would do it better. But we've never opened a facility that we said, okay, now we have to close it down. It's what wouldn't be a pilot project. It's a project that we're pretty confident with great conditions, great services, it would be very successful.
Okay. So, and I guess that was actually where I was going with my next question because I was going to say, which, you know, location has this setup? This is a pilot project. So this is a little bit, you've done things very closely related enough to feel pretty confident that you can succeed. But this is a little different than what y'all have done before, between the two organizations working together on one side and then moving forward. Is that a correct statement? You called it a pilot project?
So i- in terms of the comfort home model, that, that may be a sort of a novel component of it. But as to the campus approach, that, that's not a pilot at all. We, obviously, neither of our organizations have a project geared towards at-risk veterans in Florida. But I, I know that some of, you know, we have directed you to our Lettuce Dooka Village up in Tampa, which is 100-acre tract for 100 homes for veterans, Gold Star family members and fallen first responders. So we're not strangers to Florida. And we obviously want to make sure that the Sunshine State is taken care of in this regard. But where the, where the comfort home comes in is really to instill a sense of independence and to have each veteran have a place that they can organically call home. That is a, a more novel than the campus approach, but it's, it's far from being a pilot here in Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. So Cruz, Washington, Ballard, and then Bearden is on the board for a second time. So before we move further, Commissioner Baugh, would you like me to place you on the board[1799.11] board before we start?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, so we'll go Cruz, Washington, Ballard, Baugh, Bearden. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I just want... This isn't a question so much as I just want to kind of make sure. I kind of think this would have made a little more sense if we would have flip-flopped this and started with the staff side and explaining what we're trying to do, and then you explaining what you're going to do on the site after we... The staff explained it. But it's neither here nor there. I just want to make sure we're framing this right, because this conversation came up in February while I was out of town on that four-hour update thing. And a lot of people didn't know about it. Now, everyone's had over two months to get their briefings and really learn what this was. Just to remind everyone how this came about, last May, we went to Washington, DC, and a couple of us, three of us maybe, went and met with the Chairman of Veteran Affairs for the House of Representatives, and had a big conversation about how Manatee County was going to make a concerted effort to focus on our homeless or under-homed veterans and wraparound services. In fact, at that time, we made it a priority, I think, on our state list. It was a top-three priority for the state of Florida to express to the representatives up in Tallahassee that this was a priority that Manatee County was going to move forward with. When we met with the chairman's staff at a subsequent meeting in DC, they gave us a list of people to reach out to. And it wasn't about bringing people in to do this. It was honestly about how we could bundle the HUD-VASH vouchers to use it ourselves, because this previous... This board, albeit with different makeup, voted to put $15 million of our ARP funds towards the Judicial Center empty building across the street for the sole purpose of building housing and wraparound services for veterans. That was a decision this board made and really went along with it. We told the citizens, we told the community, we told Tallahassee, we told DC, this is something we are going to do. And we got a lot of pats on the back and publicity and, you know, accolades for making that a focus with our ARP funds. Now, we had an opportunity present itself when I started reaching out to all those contacts we had. And originally, it was Steve at US... Steve Peck at US Vets. And then, he introduced us to Tunnel to Towers. And this became an organic discussion about, hey, why are we spending $15 million of our ARP funds for a project that we have to manage ourselves, we have to build ourselves? We were being told there was no way this was being built out for $15 million. It was a drop in the bucket, we're being told. We're going to have to go out and find other funds that we have to deal with the wraparound. They basically said, hey, if we can find a suitable location, we're looking for a location to build this kind of prototype in the state of Florida in one of these select areas, South Florida, over here on the Gulf Coast. And so, they came in and met with Charlie Bishop and Lee Washington, a few others. And at that point, I stepped aside because it was getting a little too into the weeds for our commissioner. But that's how this came about. This was a board decision to allocate money and build it. Whether we put $15 million and then, God knows what else, into the empty jail across the street, or Tunnel to Towers and US Vets builds this on 66th, you're going to run into the same hypothetical problem of, are people from out of town going to come here if you build something? So, if the decision was, we're going to provide veteran housing across the street, this doesn't make that better or worse than what that previous decision was in your mind. And to say this isn't the right location, this is the exact right location. I understand what people are going to say. Oh, it's a nice piece of property. Someone may build something really needed, like self-storage or a car wash on it. Maybe both. Maybe both. But the reality is, people would want to build things like that on this because of its location. And we've been using this location forever as utility... As government utility offices. So, it's not like we've been monetizing it previously. And they have to leave anyway, because that building is basically falling apart, that hexagon building. So, one way or another, when we acquired the Leen Road property before any of us got on this board, it was to move utilities because of the quality of this. So, you look at this location. It's flat. It's clear. It allows for building the project they want to build. It's on a transit line, which gets people to the support services they need. It gets people to the employment they need. It's in walking distance from retail, from grocery stores. It allows for employment and services right from this site. It's exactly the place you... You want to say, oh, maybe we'll find someplace cheaper. Way up north, close to the Hillsboro border, you have no services, no employment. It's making it that much more difficult setting up this village to fail unless we start shuttling people back and forth on a daily basis to do it. So, that's why this location was attractive to Tunnel to Towers and US Vets. I'm sure, especially after a presentation like we just heard, Sarasota's going to reach out, and Fort Myers is going to reach out, and Fort Lauderdale and all these other places are going to reach out, because this is an opportunity where, effectively, the cost of the land, which we appraised at like $6 million, as we'll hear from the staff, compared to the $15 million that we were going to spend across the street, we get a professional project coming in with professional wraparound services that takes that off the plate of government. And we all say we're trying to lessen government and focus more on public-private partnerships. And that's exactly what this is. This is serving a need that we claim to Tallahassee and DC and Manatee County, we were going to provide for, in a manner that limits government, increases partnership with a very... This isn't some fly-by-night nonprofit that started up last month on SunBiz to pretend they're a nonprofit. This is Tunnel to Towers. It's one of the most successful nonprofits in the country. You know, I just thought this was a great opportunity. I thought this is a great location. And if we're going to use this location for something other than utilities, then I think this expresses to everybody here that we stand behind our word, that we care about our veterans, we care about our homeless veterans. We're not just going to say that to sound good in a work session. We're actually going to do something about it. And this seems like a very economical way of creating a very meaningful project for everyone in Manatee County.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I truly appreciate all the input from the commissioners thus far, and I'd like to echo what Commissioner Cruz just stated. The county made a commitment to do something for our homeless veterans here in Manatee County. And I'd like to say, as well as my fellow Marine, Commissioner Bearden would know, we're not all the same as veterans. We may be challenged with mental health, substance abuse, many other things. But to think that this would be any different than any other affordable housing project that we've approved here in Manatee County, we'd be incorrect. The most important thing, I would think, though, with this project would be the supportive services that are onsite, to ensure that these veterans are receiving the help that they should need, if they should be suffering from mental health, substance abuse or otherwise. But keep in mind, we're not a bunch of drunks with mental health issues running around Manatee County or the nation. Some of us have just run in hard times. I know when I got out of the Marine Corps, we went to TAPS, got all the briefings of all the services that you would need when you got out of the military. But I was in Camp Penance in California. I'm from Punta Gorda, Florida. So, when I moved back home, I had no idea of what that environment was like. So, if I was seeking employment and took a job offer in Manatee County, Punta Gorda, Florida, or have you, and that job didn't pan out, and I did not have the financial wherewithal or whatever reason, I had to fall out of my family, I became homeless. I wasn't necessarily suffering from mental health or substance abuse. I just fell in hard times. But having a place that was affordable for the monies that I had in my pocket or my bank account at the time, and also having the supportive services onsite to help me get back on my feet, that would truly have been a resource for me. So, if it's not this particular site, and I do apologize, and I appreciate Commissioner Cruz bringing it up, that we didn't speak about the property site just yet, and we can have staff come up and do that. If it's just the site, let's have a conversation of alternative sites. But if it's the program, let's speak to that and then move on. But I think, based on what was presented to us this morning, what's been presented to us, and we've been working on for almost a year now, we've been able to bring it formally to the board to discuss it. Your questions are more than valid. I'm just hoping that we can come to some kind of conclusion of what we're truly going to do for the homeless veterans here in Manatee County. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. The speaking order is Ballard, Baugh, and Bearden. And just to be clear, commissioners, this is... The site is in my district, and I have no problem with the site. Commissioner Ballard.
Good morning, guys. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for a great presentation. So, my biggest question is with regard to those veterans who are struggling with things like mental health and substance abuse. And when you have a rapid rehousing model with people who are struggling with some underlying issues, are we just leaning into kind of a harm reduction? What are we doing to actually solve those problems? And what is a situation that's going to be so severe that it's going to maybe get a veteran, you know, removed from this supportive housing?
So, thank you for that question. It's a question that's evolved over the years, and I can hear you speaking from experience with that. So, experience meaning understand rapid rehousing, harm reduction models, and those type of languages. We do do a harm reduction model only in the sense of, when there's any, like any other landlord or tenant, when it comes to permanent housing, if there's any behaviors, whether it's drugs or alcohol or something else, that becomes a danger to themselves or the community, they no longer could be a part of that community. It could either be drugs, it could be alcohol, it's just because I'm upset. And we don't just focus on just the drugs and alcohol. We focus on the outward behavior about that. However, to address the first part of your question, we have clinical therapists and substance abuse counselors that work with the veterans on campus and engage them into the process that we know, the cycle of change of this pre-contemplation, contemplation, action, until they're ready to get into that recovery. And as long as the effort's being made and it's not damaging the community and those around them, they're allowed to retain their housing. Now, if we were talking about transitional housing, that is different. We're able to mandate things there. You have to go through treatment. You have to do these things. You have to go move forward with this. And then, they gradually move forward. So, safety is always first and foremost for the veterans and the staff members and the surrounding communities. And we just don't throw people out. We make the proper referrals to the next place to say, this is not appropriate setting for you. Let's make sure. That's why it's important for us to come here and partner with existing agencies as well.
And just so I understand, what percentage of the units are transitional versus permanent supportive?
In this model, this is all permanent.
So, this is all... Okay. So, this is all intended to be permanent. There's no transitional aspect. Would you consider adding that later?
Yes. So, we're finding that throughout the nation, not just in Florida, the need for permanent supportive housing is really what the issue is. Say, in New York, if you're a veteran experiencing homelessness, there's over 80 places you can lay your head. But the transitional programs are so... And I don't want to disparage any program in New York doing it, but it's... It seems to just be a cycle where, three months at a time, four months at a time, they're graduating out of these transitional programs into another transitional program, into another transitional program. And it's just a lot of Band-Aids and no real ointment. So, for this program, and as we move forward throughout the nation, we're looking in Detroit, Atlanta, New York City, Portland, Seattle, Colorado Springs, have projects going in these areas. We are implementing more of permanent housing. But to your point, and as I discussed before, we're nimble enough as a foundation to be able to implement whatever the need is. So, if there's people that would previously have been classified by someone that is bound by the strictures of these terms to take transitional, you know, residence, we can do so as well. We're going to be allotting a certain percentage of this overall program for those people that, you know, may be labeled as transitional, but give them the permanent supportive housing. So, we don't want to, as, you know, was mentioned before, we don't want to be disqualifying anyone before we've really diagnosed their issue and see how we can help them.
Thank you. Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a few questions. First of all, I kind of take offense to some of the comments made, because I don't think anyone on the dais, you know, wants to take away and not be committed to helping veterans. I mean, for heaven's sakes. We might not all agree on this particular way to do it, but we're all in the same line of thought in that we need to do something. So, I've got a few questions. What is the actual financial commitment of Manatee County that's expected? I haven't heard that mentioned.
Mr. Washington.
Let me just... You know what? I've got several questions. Lee, do you want me to... Maybe you can answer them for me, and then I can continue on.
Yes, ma'am. I can actually have staff come up and speak to the actual numbers, Commissioner. We have Deputy County Administrator and Air Force Retiree Charlie Bishop, as well as our CFO, Sheila McLean, to speak about not only the property but the financial pieces.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Charlie Bishop, Deputy County Administrator. We valued the property that was referred to here on Cortez and 66 at approximately $6,640,000, which would have to be refunded to the Utilities Department based on bonds. We've also identified a piece of property, I prefer not to get into the address, where we could potentially rent and/or buy at approximately $8 million with $2 million worth of renovations, so it could be brought up to county standards to house approximately 75 utility personnel. If that site's not sufficient to purchase, which would be a faster direction, we could look at building a new building at approximately $13 million. And that's just a rough estimate, which would take us approximately two years. That's on land that we own currently behind State Route 64, next to the landfill, not Musgrave, but behind the car wash that we currently own. Does that answer your questions, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. So, I mean, we're looking at possibly, from what you're telling me, a little over $16 million if we do the one solution. The other one would be approximately 13. How about yearly? What is our financial commitment after the building is built? What are we looking at there? I haven't heard any of this mentioned on the dais, so I just thought somebody should...
You're referring to operating expenses, ma'am?
Yes. Yes. What are we... What is Manatee County committing to yearly?
Nothing, to my knowledge. The project is funded from a construction standpoint, and we, as we've said, you know, we work with the veteran for... To work out a payment structure that allows them independence and long-term sustainability with their voucher, and everything else is covered by the Tunnel to Towers Foundation.
And I appreciate you saying that. I think it's a very important question, because, you know, when you're a county or a city, you hear that, but then, there's always something that's in the background that maybe you don't realize or know about. So, I appreciate you answering that for me. I am familiar with your organization. In fact, I'm very much informed about it, and I think it's a great organization. But, you know, I have to ask, you mentioned several cities just a few minutes ago that you were looking at, and, you know, none of those cities are like Manatee County government or Manatee County, I should say, as a whole. So, I know that we're in a totally different situation than some of these other areas that you mentioned. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is that I don't... Well, let me just say this. I'm trying to be very careful here. Yes, Manatee County government, we need to do something to help our vets. I don't think it's fair to say that we would not do that. We are going to do that. It's just a matter of what it is. So, I think, you know, if you could answer the question for me, if we have somebody come in from, say, Georgia, and they're... They get into the permanent housing, and it doesn't work. They're... You know, it's just not working, and they have to leave that. We essentially are looking at the possibility of, now, we have another resident in Manatee County that's homeless. You know, we still have that problem. So, do you have any statistics in what you've done so far with permanent housing that shows what the vacancy or how that the units are turned over, or how many you have to have leave because of problems of one, you know, something, one way or another? Do you have any statistics on that?
Yes, thank you. And I'll turn this over to Darrell in a second, but just to, you know, address your question, you know, from what Darrell has stated before, for permanent housing projects, the retention rate is over 90%. And in your scenario that you've identified, where someone from Georgia comes in and, for whatever reason, they are unable to stay at the facility, the second prong of the program that we've identified is find them housing on this remote basis. So, we're not going to kick someone out of the program, and, you know, now you're on the street. We will find the appropriate place for them based on their needs. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Darrell.
And sometimes, that need is reconnecting them with family members that may be from back where they're from. We're not going to say we do the same thing back and fly them back, but if that's the reconnection, that's the proper step. Gavin pointed it out. Permanent supportive housing is one of the most successful models that we have. Over 90% are doing it. supportive housing is one of the most successful models that we have. Over 90% are doing it. On the slides that you have, I think it varies from site to site or aggregate, but it's somewhere around the aggregate of 85 to 86% are actually paying their portion of the rent or the rent. So, that's a big, it's a, it's a very successful model. It doesn't turn over as much as, say, transitional or permanent housing that is not supported. That has a bigger turn.
That's what your statistics show. And I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, but you don't really have another one of these in Florida, do you?
No, not currently. We have, we have a project, Tunnel to Towers is implementing in Land O' Lakes, Florida, which is 100 homes on 100 acres for our three categories of recipients. This is more geared towards the at-risk veteran program.
Yeah. And, and I am familiar with that one in Land O' Lakes. So, I am familiar with that, but I knew it wasn't exactly the same. All right. Well, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. I think all commissioners have asked questions at this point. We've heard from the administrator. Why don't we go to staff now? Because I think that's going to answer a lot of our questions. And then after that, we'll continue on with commissioner discussion and debate. So, we'll go to our CFO.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator. Yes, the, the most important question is how are we going to fund this endeavor? As we mentioned, and Commissioner Cruz also mentioned, the cost of this land, it's, it's coming at $6.1 million. To convey the land, the general fund will pay for these dollars, general revenues will. As for the second transaction, the first option, which would be the purchasing the similar property at an approximate estimated amount of $8.2 million, with the cost of renovation of three and a half, for a total of 11.7, in which utilities will utilize the 6.1 to offset this cost at a net amount of 5.6, they would have to pay additional. I would like to make a point that on the CIP, right now, the utility department has a building that is cost, that is estimated to be constructed at $27.5 million, which by utilizing any of these two options, it will bring the utility department big savings. And the first option would be a 21.1 savings to the system. And in option two, which would be obtaining the building in Musgrave property at a 12, 12 and a half net of the 6.1 would be a 6.4 this one will bring. And of course, assuming that it's going to take like approximately eight months to build this, this utility complex approximately for 20 months, then they will have to lease some other place. So, that will cost another $2 million per, a million dollars per year, plus the cost of renovation of whatever to bring it to county standards of whatever the place that we lease, which that will bring a net amount total of this option two with the lease of 9.4 million, still saving the, the utility department 18.1 million.
Do we have any questions specific to the CFO's comments?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have Cruz and Baugh. Commissioner Cruz.
I, I just want to make sure this is being clarified because a valid question was, was asked about the, the cost of this. And the, the first was the land was approximately $6 million. So presumably, in theory, you could sell that land to somebody else for $6 million bucks. So, there's a cost. And then there's these talks of two different options. One is purchasing that building and renovating it to move utilities. The other option is building a brand-new one behind the car wash off of 64. And so, we're kind of adding these together and saying, oh, it's about 17 million one way, 20 million another way. I, I just want to make sure it's clarified and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. And this may be more for Charlie. Utilities is planning to leave here anyway. So, while this is a quote-unquote "cost" associated with this, because they're leaving for this use, that, that, that building was always intended to come down. Utilities was always intending to move someplace. In fact, if you look at what we've already, as a previous board budgeted for the combination of moving utilities and building veteran housing, we had 15 million in ARP for veteran housing and $27 million to build a new building for utilities, already budgeted for before today, before we sat down here right this exact minute. So, we already had 32, I'm sorry, $42 million effectively soft committed for these two projects by this board. And this project costs us about 20 million on the high end if we do the new construction. So, it's about half the cost of what we've already basically acknowledged we're going to spend between veteran housing and moving utilities. So, this isn't a, a matter of, well, they're looking for land that's otherwise usable. They're not trying to build this veteran housing on this property where we have to knock down this building and go build a new one. They're building on a property that was already going to get knocked down and was already going to be vacant. And the question now is, do we use it for, for county purposes? Do we surplus it for nonprofit purposes? What, what do we do with it? But, but that's, that's kind of almost an off-the-table discussion. The option here is not leave utilities where they are and save that money. They're moving one way or the other. Correct?
True.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't think the money is what we're talking about here, Commissioner Cruz. So, you know, I, I get it. I mean, we put 15 million aside, plus Utilities has money in the CIP. So, you know, the money's there. So, that's not the question at hand. Sheila, are you still, I can't tell, are you still in the room?
Yes, ma'am, she is.
Thank, thank you. My question is, I know Mr. Bishop got up and spoke about us renting a building, et cetera. But you mentioned Musgrave property. And then I heard somebody, I think it was Commissioner Cruz, all of a sudden, we're talking about behind the car wash. Can you, can you help me with that, please? Oh, I guess it's going to be Mr. Bishop. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I refer to the property behind the car wash. I think that's the ideal location. Sheila mentioned the Musgrave, but our proposal and our cost estimates is the property, what we refer to behind the car wash that Utility currently owns. Adjacent to the Musgrave property.
All right. Because I was definitely going to be a no if you told me Musgrave. So, that's why I asked the question. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Washington, you want me to go ahead and move forward with your comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Bearden, Satcher, Cruz. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you. Gentlemen, so, question is, if there's a program that may be having, let's just say, a negative effect on the community.
Right.
Well, we as a county be able to partner with you in regards to which program is working better for this county?
Without question.
Okay. You say that there's a 90% retention rate with veterans? So, that leaves us 10%? Is that a year?
Yes, we do our numbers every year.
Okay.
Last year was at 90% permanent housing retention. That can fluctuate at times, but that's what our goal is every year is to retain 90%.
So, we're looking to do what, 200, correction, is it 200 units?
It's 122 units.
So, 120. So, we're going to automatically just expect, and these are very probably, very conservative numbers, right, that 12 veterans a year are going to be out on the streets of Manatee County? And is that accurate?
And you, you're coming to that conclusion by?
By the numbers that you're giving me.
Oh, well.
The conservative numbers you're giving me.
Well, 12, well, 10%, when we say 90%, obviously, people transition for different reasons. And so, yes, I mean, I don't know if they'll be on the streets. Some people move to another permanent housing.
And, and again, that's the ultimate objective, is while for an older class of recipient, we can implement the program to where they can live there for as long as they'd like because it is permanent housing. Our objective is reintegration back into society. So, the 10% retention rate that Daryl is referring to also encompasses people that have graduated out of the program, which is what we, what we ultimately want.
And because we're working more, we're seeing an aging population. Unfortunately, that's sometimes the last place they reside. So, that also turns the apartment over as well, or the unit over as well. But the goal is to retain and/or, when the grant is given or we perform in permanent housing, there's two goals, retain or move to another permanent housing if that's their continuum of care.
I think that this land is very valuable, right? I don't know. In my opinion, I think maybe we, we should look at a different piece of property. That's just my opinion. But I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. But I, I think we have a very valuable piece of land right there. Let me know what your thoughts are.
So, I mean, I can just real quick tell you that it's in my district. I'm very familiar with it. There's, there's a creek that runs through the middle of the property, which is going to be a problem. And there's a potential brown field in the back of the property because it's Utilities yard. So, I, I don't know that it's all, when you start, you know, peeling the, the layers of the onion back, I'm not sure that I even agree with the $6 million valuation that staff gave it. But that's just me. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think from what I'm hearing and summarizing, or to summarize what I've heard, seems like this is our least expensive option, our most effective option, and in some ways, our most courageous option. And, you know, I was looking a little bit into the organization, and the CEO stood up in, you know, 2020 on 9/11, when the bureaucracy was afraid to even have a, have a ceremony to commemorate what people did on 9/11. And so, they wouldn't have any type of get-together out of fear. And, you know, well-placed or not, but it was, and he stood up and bucked the, the powers that be and said, we'll put it together ourselves, Tunnels to Towers did. And I think we need more of that in America. And are there going to be some people that might, even with our best efforts, slip through the cracks? I imagine so. But as for me, I want to be able to say, you know, to my family, my community, my constituents, and my God, that I put forth my best efforts. And if something goes wrong despite those best efforts, that's something we all have, will have to live with and deal with at that time. So, this seems like the right thing to do. The action that the staff asked for was to direct the board to have county staff physically visit the March Veterans Village in Riverside, California, and continue negotiations with organizations to convey property that would house the Tunnels to Towers and U.S. Vets Supportive Services, Transitional Housing, and Comfort Homes Project. And at this point, I'd like to make that motion. And I would also like us to look into if we need some type of lure on this to make sure that, you know, years down the road, it continues to be used for this purpose. I'd like to add that to the motion. But that's my motion at this time, Mr. Chair.
I'll second. Sorry. You can take it.
Okay. I'm going to give, on your screen, Commissioner Satcher.
Yes, sir.
So, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Satcher. I'm sorry, I was a little distracted. Do you have a caveat to your motion that I didn't hear?
It's not a caveat. Just in addition, and maybe this is just an aside to staff, look into, you know, we have not this size organization or respectable of an organization. In the past, there are some times where we've, you know, done something similar as far as with a property, and then whatever nonprofit later on, maybe they go into financial trouble and they're just like, oh, let's unload this. And so, five years down the road, the county, you know, is just out that land.
But first, by refusal, should?
So, I just maybe.
Property be sold.
Or for them to look into a lure. I wonder if we could do that on something like this, where it's, you know, this is part of the deal, goes with the deed. Just like them to look into it. But beyond that, I just think, I think this is a good option for us and, and for the community and for our veterans.
So, we officially have a motion to approve. Mr. Clegg, do you want to try to help us word his, his, you know, sort of the spirit of, of what Commissioner Satcher's trying to achieve into the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not sure it's necessary because the agenda item is the request to proceed with negotiation. So, the, the actual transaction would have to come back to the board. There would need to be a resolution under Florida statutes to convey it to a nonprofit. And typically, when this goes through staff and the county attorney's office, we look at deed restrictions, potentially a reverter on it, so that it remains in the use that the nonprofit is representing to the board. We can look at all of those things. We always do as a standard practice.
Okay. Well, well, then I'll change my motion to the.
Just motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. But then the county attorney's office and, and property management will take, you know, credence of Commissioner Satcher's wishes.
Absolutely.
And the fact that no one on the board disputed his request. Okay. So, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Satcher. It's been seconded by Commissioner Cruz. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on the motion on the floor? Mr. Gibbelina? Oh, so you did? I, I didn't look to see if you'd signed up or if you were going to stand up. I just called your name, sir.
All right. Thank you. Glenn Gibbelina, for the record. We have, you know, this should have been approved an hour ago. I can't believe we're even having this discussion. You have a world-renowned organization coming in here, ready to lift up our veterans, our veteran situation in, in our community. Let me point out a few things. We've got 84, 84 homeless vets. We've had them for 10 years, Mr. Bearden, 10 years. This county has done zero in helping the veterans. You push them off the turning points, you push them off the Salvation Army. This is a home run. Where else are you going to have an organization like this? Let me tell you something about the VASH vouchers. There are no VASH vouchers in Manatee. You have to go to Sarasota. This would be a great organization to take over the VASH voucher. Item two on the VASH vouchers, they're for set, they're for a set amount. Vets go out, try to find housing, oh, that VASH voucher is only for 1,200. We need 1,600. So, they go unused because they can't afford to find affordable housing. These guys are open arms. We'll take them. We'll make up the difference. We'll make the numbers work. It's unbelievable we're even having this conversation. Support services, that's a handful in itself. They're not asking for, for Centerstone to come in. They're not asking for, you know, Helping Hands to come in. They're not asking for any, they bring in their own pros. This is a no-brainer. The 6 million, you should, you should convey that land to them free of charge. Let's talk about the 15 million. 15 million, we've already earmarked for that. Give it to them. In fact, let's, let's take it one step further. Let's take 2 million, $2 million of that and match the VASH vouchers that we don't have, right? Because it's going to take two years to build that out. In the meantime, we still have 84 vets that are homeless living in the streets of Manatee, where they have been living homeless for over a decade in my advocacy that I've been working with veterans. So, we haven't done anything. These guys are a home run. The VASH vouchers, we need to move that program from Sarasota and have our own entity with the VASH vouchers. I met with Verdi McKenna last month. I said, we need to increase this. Glenn, I'll look into it. I met with Greg Stube last week. We need more VASH vouchers. I'll look into it. We don't, we don't have enough VASH vouchers, and these guys are willing to take them at face value. This should have been voted an hour ago, 7-0. Let's move this forward, damn it, man.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on the motion on the floor? Ma'am, first and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes to address the board on the motion. Thank you, ma'am.
Stacy Jesse, Mandi County. And I just wanted to first just commend the commissioners who've really prioritized homelessness over the past couple of years, and even some of you that have got on here and have recently really prioritized it. A lot of us have watched that and have noticed how hard you've been working, going out to California, meeting with all these groups nationally and locally. And I think that's such an important issue that so many of us are concerned about, particularly where it comes to our homeless veterans. We have so many veterans in this room. And so, and we all know veterans who have protected this country, and they deserve now to have the support of our community, our government, and these nonprofits who are willing to work with them. My dad is, is a veteran, and he sits on the board of a very similar nonprofit up in Kansas City that helps homeless veterans. Two of my neighbors work for a local nonprofit that does the same thing. And so, during this meeting before, I was asking them, have you heard of these organizations? Do you recommend them? And it was a resounding yes. These organizations can do, they're going to give Manatee County the reputation it needs. You need to be a place that veterans feel safe to go to. You should be a place that is known for that. We have over 10,000 new people coming to this county every year. Do we really want to just be the place where people that can afford $0.5 million in East County go to? Or do we want to be a safe place for veterans? Sure, some veterans are going to come from other places. But they've earned our respect. They've earned a place to lay their head and a place to get their lives back on track. And I'd like us not just to be a playground for those wealthy people, but also for those who have served our country and need help getting their feet back on the ground. So, I really encourage you not to think the land is too expensive for, for these people who've served our country or for anything like that. But they have deserved our respect. They deserve, they deserve the money that it takes to support them. And I think as a community, the only answer to this is yes. And I really thank Commissioner Satcher for, for making this motion because I agree with Glenn. I think this should be a really simple solution. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on the motion on the floor? All right. Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. And we will go back to discussion amongst the board. Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Bearden are on the board.
I'll be quick. First, Glenn, we're not selling the land for $6 million. It's, it's, it is being transferred over. It's, it is being transferred over. That's the proposal. The $6 million you see is because the land's owned by utilities, they're in enterprise funds, so the county has to make them whole. That's outside the scope of our agreements with them. That is kind of our contribution towards this, this project. As for the location and the question of is this the right place or the wrong place? It's the exact right place. It's the only place we're looking at. These groups have come in in good faith multiple times to look at every piece of dirt we could possibly come up with to show them, and we, they've been discussed. When they first came over, mind you, there wasn't even discussion about other locations. It was because I was talking with Steve Peck from U.S. Vets about how to bundle the VASH vouchers to use to help us cover the, what was going to be owner's cost of renovating the jail across the street. And so the first property they were taken to, geez, last summer, I mean, it's been going forever, was that jail. And they were looking at that to see if they could make this work there. And that's how everything kind of organically came to this property on 66th right here. And to say, "Well, it's valuable," or "It's a nice piece of..." I've said this before, and I'll say it again, but unfortunately, every other time I say it, it's about frivolous stuff. We just had a conversation last week about Premier, and how we need to, like, throw tens of millions of dollars into a pool, because that has to be the most world-class place in the entire world. We have to spend tens of millions of dollars on boat ramps, because we need world-class boat. Can we, for once, have world-class something that isn't like catering to the, to all of that? Like, this is a great piece of property, and to make an argument like, "Oh, I'll give them a $3 million property, not a $6 million property," it's $3 million. That's not going to, that's not going to cover the chemicals for that pool. So it's like, why don't we just build something nice for a change, for people who actually need something nice? Because the people moving in here are not using our boat ramps, and their kids are not swimming on the swim teams, but they're going to finally have a nice place to live, where they can walk to work and walk to services. I'm not going to nitpick over this opportunity, over maybe there's a slightly less perfect piece of land someplace else, so we can sell this to someone because of value. But that, I think we're really, really making a bad decision if we do that. And any motion I have is for this piece of property with this group.
Thank you, sir. Bearden and Van Austin Bridge is the speaking order. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, my thing behind it is, the reasons why I have the, I guess you could say, like, the notions that I have is because of experiences from friends of mine. Right? And so when I've been around a group of a lot of Marine Corps, Iraqi and Afghanistan veterans, and I've trained those guys, and when they've told me, you know, who are suffering high, you know, PTSD issues and substance abuse issues and things like that, and they've, and I've spoken with them that have used facilities and gone through the services of U.S. Vets. I have every right to have the concerns that I have based off of the relationships that I have. And so that's not necessarily saying that you guys are doing, you know, awful job. You guys are doing a great job, right? And trying to fix the solution that we have in this country. Right? But it does make me reserve in moving and deciding on directions that I want to move our county forward, here in Manatee County. I think I might feel a little bit better, right, if I could get permission from the board to go out to Riverside and check out the facility, and...
You don't need our permission for that, sir. You're more than...
Okay.
More than able to do that.
That's just me. I like to physically see it. I like to physically see how the people are doing, ask questions with the people and things like that, to see if they're truly getting services and we're fixing the solution, not putting a Band-Aid over it, right? Fixing the solution with these veterans. Because that's my main concern, is ensuring that these veterans are plugged back in society, that they feel like they're part of society, because that's the biggest issue. The biggest issue is not the temporary fix that we can all of a sudden house veterans. The biggest issue is that, how can we, how can we come up with solutions for long-term? Now, I'm not like every veteran. I was a homeless veteran. I've been there. I've been, I've been homeless in Hawaii. I've been homeless in, here in the state of Florida at one point in time. Right? I found the solution. My solution was Jesus. That's what my solution was. Right? A different solution may be something different. Okay? But I want to ensure that we are finding solutions for these veterans, right? Plugging them back into society, ensuring that they feel like they're part of society, because that's the biggest thing to a veteran, is that they feel isolated. Right? And so, you know, whether it's this piece of property or another, if the board feels that this is, and, Mr. Chairman, this is in your district, if you feel as if this is the perfect property for this facility, then I, you know, I would support you in that. You know, because you know your district better than anybody else on this board. So that's all I have to say, is that it is a big concern of mine. Veterans is at the top of my list. I want to make sure that, you know, they're getting the services that they need, so that we can continue to move forward and not have veterans back out on the street again, but actually fixing the solutions, getting them plugged back into society, getting them plugged back into the workforce, getting them plugged back, and maybe them starting their own business, and so on. That's where my heart is at. I'm not with the Band-Aid heart, I'm with the solution heart. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. So, couple things. Well, I'm on the board next. So Commissioner Ron has joined us on Zoom and will be voting on this item, along with Commissioner Baugh, who's on Zoom as well. But I wanted to address something that came up in public comment. I respect the man that came up to speak during public comment, but I'm going to disagree with some of the things he said. I'm proud of the questions of the board asked today. I think they're necessary. It's, it's a, it's a big responsibility, being handed literally billions of dollars that is not your money, and then being tasked with deciding how to allocate those funds in a way that hopefully is, strictly creates a public benefit and makes this community a better place, and at the same time, is fiscally conservative. So thank you all for coming, obviously. You came a long way, and we appreciate that. Thank you for what you're wanting to do here in our community. We appreciate that as well. But it's our, it's our jobs, it's our responsibility to ask these questions, because the devil is in the details. And so it's important to sort of peel the layers back and find out exactly what this is going to look like before we move any further forward, and to give some sense of direction as to what the board wants it to look like as you move forward, so that as you continue to structure this, you're structuring it in a way that best suits Manatee County. I also respect the comments that Commissioner Bearden made about his past experiences and his friends' experiences, and that's, that's what we are. Right? All, each of us, you know, ultimately is sort of the total of our experiences, our life experiences. And so that's, that's how we're up here governing and making decisions every day. So I respect the comments that he made as well. I'm going to...
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, ma'am, when you're finished, may I?
I'll add you to the list. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ultimately, I'm going to support this. I didn't say it was a perfect site. I just said that it was, it is in my district, and I'm proud to have this location, to have this site and this project in my district, if that's what the board chooses. Commissioner Baugh, we'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Yes, just, just real quickly. Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate everything that you just said. I could not agree more. I was prepared to make those comments myself. So I think sometimes we forget that every bit of the money that we generally spend, it's taxpayer money, all the taxpayers. So, you know, we have to have money that we spend in other areas, and I, for one, do not regret the money that we just did on Premier. I think it was very well spent. I think any money that we spend where the residents are going to get a better quality of life, makes it worthwhile. That's our job. And I appreciate Commissioner Bearden speaking up, his comments, I thought they were right on the money, and I took them into consideration. I as well will be supporting this, because I think as we move forward, some of the issues that we're having, you know, perhaps we can, can, you know, feel a little better about them, but I think it is a step in the right direction, because after all, we do have veterans here that are not just homeless, but have issues, and we need to, to think about that and thank them for the service they gave this country. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I would just add on one more thing that you and I were both touching on, and that's that not only are we stewards of this money, but this is money that was not voluntarily proffered by citizens. I have a pretty strong libertarian streak that runs through me, and I often remind myself that the monies that we are spending here were taken from our citizens by force, or at least by the threat of force. Gentlemen, I think you're in a good position here as we move forward with the vote, and I'm in sales, so oftentimes I stop talking when I think I've made the sale, but I see you all sort of on the edge of your seats, like you want to address the board again. Would you like to speak?
Understood.
Yes, sir. If you'd like to speak, I'm giving you the opportunity now.
It won't be long, sir.
That's your decision.
I just wanted to thank the board, first of all, and thank Mr. Bearden's comments. It resonates in our heart, because U.S. Vets prides itself in everything he just said. Not the property, not the partnership here, but Tunnel to Towers. Our number-one partnership is with the veterans themselves. And we all have a responsibility to give back to the community which live, and we all have this different delegation of duty. And even though we're not officially elected, in office through political process, we are all uncles and aunts, mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers of serving the veterans, and it's our job to take our goodwill and turn it into the fortune to others. So U.S. Vets prides itself on that. Thank you for those comments. We take them to heart, and service delivery is our number-one service. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's a great closing. All right. Commissioners, we've held public comment, we've had lengthy discussion, and there's no one else on the board at this time to speak. So at this time, let's move forward with our vote. Commissioners, you can cast your votes now. Commissioner Baugh, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. And so ultimately, Madam Clerk, this passes unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. Well done, Commissioner Cruz, as well. All right, it is 12:18. We're going to recess this meeting for lunch, and we will return at 1:30. We're in recess. All right. Thank you, and welcome back. We do have four commissioners in the chamber, and a bad mic. Okay, we'll try again. So we have four commissioners. Okay, we're back, and all systems are go. So we'll go to item number 43, which is a Public Works item. Florida Department of Transportation Cortez Vision and Action Plan. So we'll turn things over to Mr. Davis, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. For the record, my name is Clark Davis, Deputy Director of Public Works Traffic Management, and I'm here to introduce Mr. Keith Robbins. He's our District Safety Administrator for Florida Department of Transportation, District One. He'll share with you some safety statistics for Cortez Road, and then introduce his consultant to talk a little bit about the vision plan. So, Mr. Robbins.
Thank you. I'm Keith Robbins, the District Safety Administrator for Florida Department of Transportation, District One. And the slides that you see before you, I'm going to give you as a preamble to the proposition for a corridor vision plan on Cortez Road. This shows, based off of Signal Four analytics crash data, for the last seven years, a total of 21 fatal crashes along this corridor, resulting in 22 fatalities for an average of three per year. 347 injury crashes, with 455 serious injuries. Three of the top 10 segments on our Top 20 list district-wide are on this stretch of roadway, for fatal and serious injury crashes. 10 of the intersections rank in the top 5% of the most dangerous intersections in our district are on this roadway. In bike and pedestrian fatal and serious injury crashes, you can see the numbers there resulting in six and five fatalities, respectively. What I'm telling you is, this is a very particularly dangerous stretch of roadway for use for a variety of reasons. There are a number of things that we're looking to do to address this, chief of which will come by two studies that will be done here in the very near term. One is a safety action plan on all state system roadways within Manatee County that we're doing in conjunction with Manatee County Public Works as part of the Safe Systems for All program. And then the second is the corridor vision plan that Mr. Frank Calpakas from Renaissance Planning Group will explain to you now. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board members. Frank Calpakas with Renaissance Planning. We're in a contract with FDOT District One, under their Planning Studio Group. And the planning studio was established to get out in front of transportation improvement plans, to ensure that the transportation strategies align with a community vision, with an economic development strategy, with a safety strategy, environmental preservation strategy. And so we've been working with communities, partnering with communities to understand a vision of what the community wants, develop transportation strategies that align with that vision, and move the community forward, towards that vision. Okay, so. So the project study area is on Cortez Road, as Keith mentioned. It's from the bridge to 301 Boulevard. There, the right-of-way is between 80 and 120 feet. It's a 10-mile, 10-mile stretch. The purpose of this plan, as I mentioned, is to develop an integrated land use and transportation strategy, partnering with the community stakeholders to understand their desires for this corridor, the potential for this corridor, and work with the community and stakeholders to develop strategies, both from a land use policy perspective and a transportation strategy that are mutually supportive, to move closer to that vision. vision. And so, safety is going to be a big part of that. We'll develop an action, an action plan that's specific about roles and responsibilities, and who's, who's doing what, who's leading different, different strategies. And, and just ensuring that we have a, a comprehensive view and perspective of the corridor, and developing a comprehensive strategy to, to address the, the issues that, that we'll uncover. The schedule is a year, a year-long schedule. We'll first really work with the, with the county to kind of make sure that we're, and have a good understanding of, of the issues and the desires there. We'll go through a dat- data collection process, really understanding, doing a technical track to, to understand safety conditions, mobility conditions, understand the current policies and opportunities for the corridor. Lots of engagement with the community. We want to really partner with them, work together to understand, to develop, understand opportunities and translate those into transportation strategies that, that, that again align, align with the desired vision. There'll be also land use policies, and again, an implementation plan that kind of lays, lays out our track. And so, again, we're here to, to seek your support to, to move forward with this study. We want to collaborate with, with your staff before we, in, in actually developing the scope to ensure that we're including everything that we want, we need to look at. Then we'll hopefully kick off a project in June. I'm here to answer any, any questions, anything I can clarify.
Thank you, sir. So, I'm on the board for questions, seem to be the only one. So, my first question is, could I get these slides emailed to me?
Yes.
For this presentation? I'd appreciate that. Second, there were a couple of things that Mayor Brown and I were planning to, to bring forward to the MPO. One of them would be D cell lanes on Manatee Avenue 64 and on Cortez Road. D cell lanes, that signal, turn lanes at signalized intersections, because there are multiple in West Bradenton that do not have those. I could sit here and rattle them off, but you probably already know what they are. So, is there some sort of, you know, specific plan from FDOT, or are you simply looking for, here to look for feedback from us first? And if that's the case, I would start with D cell lanes.
Oh, we'll definitely look at that, among other things. And so, I would, I would propose that maybe we can actually meet with each of you.
Individually, sure.
Kind of really understand that. I think that'd be very valuable to, to the project.
And, and another thing that we looked at in West Bradenton specifically, where we have constrained roads, or constrained right-of, roads with constrained right-of-way, Cortez being one of them, was the, the ability for us to improve the flow at intersections, specifically on Cortez Road. We've already done that on 43rd and Cortez Road, but other intersections would be 26th Street, probably the most egregious, right? And so, we've looked at that from a county standpoint, as far as widening, you know, going to dual lefts, going to dedicated rights, as well as the two through lanes. There's right-of-way acquisition that would be needed. 26th Street alone, we were ballparking that, including right-of-way act, at, at around 8 million. If there are opportunity for shared costs to help the county improve the safety on, it's, it's our road, but it's your road, right?
Yeah.
So, are there shared cost opportunities for intersection improvements?
Well, Keith, dress up.
He's just a safety guy. You handle the bills. Okay.
Yes, absolutely. There's always opportunities for shared costs, and, and we enjoy having the county participate in that manner, because sometimes that can help projects move ahead sooner rather than later.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question, is a timeline, because, you know, the MPO process, we, we love our MPO, but the MPO process has an extended, you know, an extended timeline, doesn't it? I mean, it tends to take three, four, five years to get something through the MPO process. And if that's the case, then that's the case, but you're here telling me that three people, three of our residents are dying every year on the road. So, you know, can we have an expedited process for Cortez Road, since there is such an egregious safety concern?
I'll give you the answer that I know from my department, and I'll let Frank address any of the longer term. There are some that we can do as operational improvements that can be done sooner rather than later. And when I talk about sooner, you know, not necessarily at the outer edge of the five-year work program, depending on what they are, they can be incorporated sooner using safety funds and local funds as well.
The fatalities, are they all, are these all vehicular fatalities, or are you including pedestrian fatalities in there as well?
That first chart included bicyclists, pedestrians, and vehicular.
Okay. All right. I think that answers my questions. Commissioner Satcher, you're next on the board, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope that, as you take a look at it, obviously, I'll, I think each of our state roads, which, this is not pointing fingers, you know, we are becoming intimately aware with the challenges of, of expanding a road and capacity and moving traffic, and how many different players are involved, and the time, and et cetera. And of course, y'all are, that's what you do. But I would love to, I'm excited that you're here, taking a look at one of our state roads. I hope that we'll also look at, you know, 64 and 301. And then I've, I've been, I've talked some with our Public Works Department about implementing a, you know, a traffic management system, something that times these lights more effectively, because it's, you know, we all know it, and I understand that it's probably sometimes just unavoidable, but when you see the biggest light in town, green, and nobody going through it, because they're all stuck at a little side road right before it, and they can't get to that green light to clear the traffic out. So, any type of cost sharing, working together, planning to make something like that, I hope we'll really take a look at it, because, you know, between Cortez, Manatee Avenue, and 301, we could have a whole lot of, you know, real progress and some happier residents. And then I was just talking to, to Public Safety the other day, and they were talking about the need for the lights that respond to our emergency vehicles, that they can, you know, that they have control over when they need to get through a light. So, I hope we'll look at that as we go through this process. I appreciate you being here and, and looking at one of our roads. Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. And I did put myself next on the board, because I just wanted to piggyback off of Commissioner Satcher's comments. We, we are looking, we often speak publicly about aggressively looking to expand the capacity of our road system in an effort to move more vehicles and to, you know, to sort of improve flow. But, safety, I'm glad you're here, because safety is a huge aspect of this that oftentimes just doesn't sell as well to people, because they don't think they're impacted by it on a daily basis. But that is an important factor, probably the leading factor in what we're trying to accomplish. Commissioner Satcher's district, Moxon Wallow, is, is a road that's, it's a local road, it's not a state road, but it does connect two state roads, technically three state roads, right, if you include the interstate. So, it's an important, what will ultimately be an arterial for us, and that road has become a serious safety concern. And I did text, there was a horrible accident in Moxon Wallow three weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and I did text our delegation that night, actually, when it happened, and sent him a screenshot of the, our 911 dashboard. We had three helicopters on the ground at one time, and they were cutting people out of cars, and it was a really gruesome situation at, like, 9 o'clock on a Friday night. And that's, that's what we're trying to, to protect people from. That's what we're trying to prevent. So, I'm, I'm glad you're here to talk about safety. Cortez doesn't even have really the option to expand the capacity. So, this is strictly about safety. But I just want to make sure one knows that the capacity, you know, that we're trying to, to add on a lot of these other roads, that safety is an integral part of that, and it's tied to that.
Absolutely. And multimodal safety will be a focus of this study, for sure.
All right. Thank you, sir. I don't have anyone else on the board. I don't believe any action is needed here. I think you were presentation-only, and you'll follow up with us individually.
Just want your support to move forward.
We, we absolutely support that. Do we need to take a vote on that, Mr. Clegg?
Well, it's styled as a report, but I see Clark kind of getting antsy, so there is an action requested in the cover sheet, which is Manatee County Support for Florida Department of Transportation Continued Development of the Cortez Road Vision and Action Plan. Is that something staff was looking for, Clark? I'd appreciate if staff would come to the microphone and say if you're asking for action from the board. I don't think it's my.
We would appreciate the motion of support, but we read the consensus as well, so if you don't, I think we, we know what to do from here.
So moved.
So, we have a motion to support the initiative by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak or address the board on the motion on the floor? Okay, we're going to close public comment, seeing no one coming forward, and we'll move forward with the vote. I guess we'll do it on our screens. I was going to do it verbally, but that's okay. I like that you caught up. So, motion by Ballard, second by Cruz. And Commissioner Baugh, how do you vote, ma'am?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron, how do you vote, sir? Okay. He didn't make it back from lunch. All right. So, it passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of six to zero, with Commissioner Ron absent. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank both of you for all that you do for us. We appreciate it. Yeah. All right. That takes care of item number 43. Move on to item number 44 on our regular agenda, which is public safety item, execution of a memorandum of understanding for remote site education at Bishop Animal Shelter between the School Board of Manatee County, DBA, doing business as Manatee Technical College, and Manatee County Government. Who is here from staff to present?
Good afternoon. Sarah Brown, Division Chief for the Division of Animal Welfare. So, I'm here to introduce item 44, the execution of a memorandum, understanding for remote site education at the Bishop Animal Shelter. This memorandum of understanding would enter in between Manatee County Government and Manatee Technical College, establishing a partnership to co-locate a veterinary assisting program at the Bishop Animal Shelter intake facility. Manatee Technical College plans to offer an accredited veterinary assisting program for the benefit, benefit of the residents and workplace preparation. This is a great opportunity to bring qualified workers to the field of veterinary medicine during a time of a national shortage. The Certified Veterinary Assistant Program is qualified through the Certified Veterinary Medical Association. The Bishop Animal Shelter has the capacity to offer a practical veterinary assisting experience, working with animals for the students in the program, providing opportunities for observational and practice experiences at the shelter. This MOU establishes a partnership with Bishop Animal Shelter to locate the program at the facility. The program would prepare students with the necessary skills to work in a shelter setting or a veterinary hospital. Upon completion of the program, students would be eligible to take the Certified Veterinary Assistant exam. It would consist of 750 hours for the certification, approximately four days a week, 8 to noon, take approximately 188 days to complete. It consists of both classroom time and lab time, and some of the notable coursework items would include, but are not limited to, the human animal bond and its effects on human health, veterinary science terminology, careers in, in the industry, safety, animal behavior, animal restraint, basic first aid, preventative medicine and disease control, vital signs and diagnostic testing, microscope, urinalysis, fecal, blood analyzer, husbandry, proper sanitation, laws, statutes, and ordinances, record-keeping, surgical preparation and assistance, and pharmacology. Overall, the program comes at a time when there is a huge need in the industry. This partnership would not only provide practical experience to students, but hopefully inspire some work in shelter medicine.
Ma'am, if I could help you summarize this real quick. So, at a time when you're having a labor shortage, we're talking about free labor for Manatee County, right?
We are talking about free labor for Manatee County. It would, it would give some great opportunities for people to work in our medical, in our medical area.
Just trying to help you speak our language. Cruz and Ballard are on the board. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, this is just an amazing opportunity. And when we first started talking about Bishop, MTC reached out almost immediately. You know, MTC is a critically important part of our education system here in Manatee County. And they're always looking for these unique ways, whether it's training people up at the jail, or, or anything out on the field to, to make them a world-class, you know, facility. And this opportunity, as, as the Chair said, to effectively get free help at, at our clinic at Bishop, a couple of them immediately probably coming, one of the preeminent, you know, teachers in this field, that's a needed field, that, that we desperately need to train more people in, is just such a great public-private partnership to all work together to improve not one, but two different institutions here in Manatee County. I'm so happy to see this finally move forward. I will comment, I think the MOU may have a typo in it, only because it's a three-year term, which seems a little short. By the time they actually advertise this and get up and running, maybe they'll get it done by the start of the 2003 season, or, or class season. But it says three years, but it says it expires in, like, June 2025. That's only a two-year.
We actually started negotiating it last year, so I think we probably, you're probably at.
Okay, so we just need to update that based on the, the current date. Okay, so it's three, effectively, it will be three years from execution of the agreement.
Three years from execution, but it does have a, various ways that either party can get out of it, if and when that's.
Understood. But, but they're building out, unless I'm mistaken, they're building out the, the house there for classroom space, so they're putting meaningful dollars in it. They're not just taking advantage of a free clinic, not that we would care, that even that in and of itself is a good opportunity, but they're going to be putting real capital and, and effort into creating this for presumably the long term.
For the, for the short term right now, and that's really where we're looking, starting this program in January, and it would be housed in that kind of living room area of the house that we would turn into a classroom setting. We're talking about eight students for this course to begin, and then we'll grow it from there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ballard.
So, this was actually initially on the consent agenda, and I just think that it is such a wonderful opportunity for MTC, for the county, that I wanted to make sure that we were able to highlight it publicly, because it is a really, a really great thing for, for these students who are getting trained. It's a really great thing for, for the county and for Bishop, getting, getting that critical support staff that we, that we need for free. So, it's just a win-win, and I'm so excited to see it, to see it go forward, and excited to see the program grow and expand and, and become all that it can be.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Ron, I'm told, is now on. Commissioner Ron or Commissioner Baugh, do either of you want to make comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With Commissioner Ballard, too. This is a great thing that we're doing. I mean, we consistently see that we need to help the, the animal shelter, and I, I mean, I'm all for it, so whatever you need to push us along, let's do it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Baugh, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just wanted to say, congratulations to Sarah Brown. She and I have had many conversations, and I know that she's got a lot of good things in the work, and this is just the first of many coming forward. So, congratulations on this.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I love this, and, you know, once you get the new building, eventually, try and work USF into a, an actual vet, you know, vet tech, but then see if you can work with USF to bring vets in as well, take all the free labor we can get.
That would be amazing.
All right. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. There's no one on the board for discussion. Ballard has made a motion to approve. Cruz has seconded. We can cast our votes now. Commissioner Baugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron?
Yes.
All right. So, Baugh and Ron say yes. Everyone says yes. It's unanimous approval, seven to zero, Madam Clerk. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on then to item number 45. Mr. Hunsaker is here. Natural Resources Environmental Lands Program Update and Environmental Lands Management and Acquisition Committee, LMAC, recommendations. Mr. Hunsaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April 3rd, LMAC had the opportunity during one of their regularly scheduled meetings to continue the process of evaluating properties, self-nominated or nominated by others, for evaluation, for acquisition on the environmental lands program, or control through a conservation easement process. And among other topics that they covered on April 3rd were two primary properties that we are bringing forward for recommendation through the committee structure for your consideration. I'll save my comments for, for later, only to say that these are two just wonderful projects and properties, meeting some of the criteria that we've set forth. And Deborah Worth, who is our Environmental Lands Program Division Manager, will be making our presentation today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Deborah Worth, Environmental Lands Program Manager. As Mr. Hunsaker mentioned, we have really two properties that we're here to present to you on behalf of LMAC. Our last board meeting, we heard some comments about reviewing our process and procedures. So, I wanted to just start off by saying that I and procedures. So I wanted to just start off by saying that I included in today's agenda packet some information for you to consider. There's a flow chart for our process. There's an example of a work plan template that is for one of the properties that this board's already approved for due diligence. And also, the Florida Forever appraisal methods are written out, and we have put together our LMAC orientation packet in digital form, and so we can provide that to each of you in case you want to peruse all the things that LMAC considers when they review properties and go about their business. So I have some by-the-number statistics here, but you'll also find in the packet is a summary table, and I'm trying to sort of size things up for you there. You'll see at the top are the properties that you've already approved for due diligence. The just values are in there, some other basic criteria, the two properties that you're considering today, the four or five properties below that that LMAC is considering at their next meeting, May first. And then below that are some properties LMAC has considered that were lower priority, that aren't coming to you, at least not at this time. And then lastly, the very bottom are some that are no-gos according to commission. So there will be more coming. You know, this is a rolling, evolving process. So there'll certainly be more. There's also a map that shows you location of each of those candidate properties relative to each other county-wide, very simple map. So a brief review for everyone that's not familiar. The basic criteria, the four criteria that are considered for prioritizing land for conservation acquisition have been in the ordinance since two thousand and three, and they're fundamental to land acquisition pretty much everywhere. We look at the ecological quality of the species or habitat on site, the rarity of the species or habitat on site, connectivity with other conservation lands for wildlife corridors, and also the importance to water resources. So given the referendum language that funded conservation land acquisition in two thousand and twenty, there were very specific things on that ballot, and they are essentially part of those four criteria. But we've called them out individually so that we check those off and indicate yes or no, whether the drinking water protection, water quality protection, prevention of stormwater runoff pollution, preservation of fish habitat, preservation of wildlife habitat, and provision of parks are being met. So we're accountable for how this money is being spent. The additional considerations that come into play, of course, are somewhat more human-based. For managing parks and preserves, if there's an out parcel property that's within it that's privately owned, it makes it more difficult to manage irregular boundaries, things like that. You know, we're looking at cost effectiveness here. So there are some properties that we hope to bring forward that will help with that, and I plan to go about including all those in a list, not necessarily identifying the property owners, but just to give you an idea of how many acres, how many parcels, and what the just values of those properties are. We also look at the public benefits, what it brings to the community, if it's a community that doesn't have an existing park in the area, and of course, the cost. If the owner is giving a discount, what our partner funding supports. And of course, always trying to optimize the use of those referendum funds, and sort of pick and choose which partners we work with, depending on the type of the project, so that we can really stretch our dollars in conjunction with those partners. So one of the mentions that we've made in the past, you know, sorry if I'm repeating if you've heard this before, but for the stormwater runoff pollution, we've thought through that as professionals, what does that really mean? What does it not mean? And there is opportunity, when you buy conservation land, to improve water quality. For instance, taking a ditch or a stream that's been straightened, having it meander, vegetation that's being used. And then there's also potential for flood mitigation as well. So the referendum funds, we don't understand to be interpreted to be intended for the gray infrastructure, the pipes, the steel structures and the concrete that would be used for treatment or typical stormwater ponds. But certainly, projects that involve that could bring other funding sources in to accomplish greater goals together. So the first of the two projects that are being recommended unanimously by LMAC we're referring to is Emerson Point Expansion. This ninety-eight acre property is adjacent to Emerson Point, but it truly stands on its own merit as a conservation acquisition because of the resources it offers. Fifty-four of the acres are in pasture, the remaining is wetland. There's about a half a mile of mangrove shoreline that's along Terraceea Bay Aquatic Preserve, which is an outstanding Florida waterway. So this would support manatee, fisheries, water quality, and other species as well. It's also a long and existing blue way, and there's access by kayak or canoe in Emerson Point Preserve that would allow along this shoreline for the blue way. This property, for many years, has been on the Florida Forever list for acquisition, and the two thousand and twenty-one five-year plan for Terraceea considers it an essential remaining parcel. And this map shows you from the Terraceea Florida Forever five-year plan, the property is on the very southern border of this map, right there on Sneed Island. So this brings with it the possibility of a seventy-five percent contribution from Florida Forever. We've discussed the property with them in partnering. We don't know what that percentage would be yet, but based on past experience, it could be seventy-five percent. We've also discussed the property with the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, and there's a letter of support they provided. I put it at your desktop there. I forgot to include it in the agenda item. It is on our dashboard with the candidate properties. It's included in there for the public to see. And the Estuary Program offers annual grants referred to as their T-Birth Program, and this property with its restoration to more native conditions would be eligible for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for restoration and for management. It would be eligible in the next funding cycle, and we've already discussed some of the things that could be done, including some tidal creeks, some salt marshes, and different features that would be beneficial to the environment and for improving water quality. Public access is fairly straightforward there. It's easy to provide. We could have basic public access with a small parking lot near the entrance for about fifteen cars, and extend trails so that they connect with the existing Emerson Point Preserve. There is a lot of pressure on that park because of the visitors, and if you've been there on a weekend or a holiday, you've probably noticed that all the parking spaces are full, and people are looking for other places to park, to enjoy. Mike Elzwick is poised and ready to put together sort of an à la carte table with cost estimates for the amenities that could be provided. Of course, we could add in a restroom, you could have boardwalks that go out to the water for fishing, et cetera. The long-term management costs would be low because it is adjacent to Emerson Point. It wouldn't add substantially to those costs for resource management long-term. The property is currently being offered by the Eschenball Land Company. They refer to it as a Sneed Island project, and the family that owns it has four acres that they would like to reserve for themselves for future home site. It's up in the northeast corner, and yes, we would need to provide access to that home site from the entrance of the property. There's currently just a small home that's there that was built in nineteen thirty-seven and renovated in nineteen seventy-seven. Very small value to that home relative to the overall property. They do aspire to have the rights and permits to develop ninety-eight home sites there. The price has been reduced to sixteen million. I imagine that price will continue to come down. Just looking at the just value alone in the property appraisers database, it's about two million. Our in-house team, excuse me, wasn't comfortable doing an in-house value opinion because the property is so unique, but we have an appraiser that is sort of in the queue that could have an official appraisal back to us in about four weeks. So do you have any questions before I go on to the second property?
We do. Let's stop. This is the big one, I think. So why don't we stop and talk about this one for a minute? Cruz, Ballard, and Van Austin Bridge is the speaking order. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baugh, do you want on the board, or Commissioner Ron?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Ron?
Not this time.
Okay. Cruz, Ballard, and Van Austin Bridge.
All right, so the question is, do we get an appraisal and work out, I mean, because it's sixteen million. Let's be honest, this parcel's great. I mean, I love this opportunity. I love Emerson Point, and making Emerson Point even bigger and more accessible to everyone is something we should a hundred percent be looking at. It's just a quite, you know, everything just comes down to we have a pool of fifty million dollars. Everything's opportunity cost, and even with seventy-five percent share, it's four million bucks. It's almost ten percent of the fifty million dollars, depending on where that comes out. But relative to if we're doing the same thing we always are, which is just basically giving direction to continue moving forward to see where we get. I mean, I can't imagine a scenario where we wouldn't at least entertain this. It's too important of a piece of property to not put our best foot forward and see how we can make something like this work. I'm not a huge fan, as you know, of just blowing fifty million bucks on acquisitions. I mean, just so you know, just for disclosure, we've been talking, we sat down last week, week and a half ago, and pulled out maps, because I'm trying to figure out how to use some of this money and create a meaningful wildlife corridor from Myakka State Park all the way up through Duette up to Little Manatee, and create a real wildlife, which will effectively create a fire line for development. It'll also create a meaningful wildlife corridor, and the state's making a big effort to go all the way from, you know, a wildlife corridor all the way down to the Everglades at some point. That's a great opportunity with this money, and you can do a lot of that with easements and so forth, cheaper than purchase. But some properties are just going to require purchase. If we're going to look at a purchased property, this is one of them that I would a hundred percent support.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So this is in my district, and an additional ninety-four, I agree with, regarding this property, I agree with everything that Commissioner Cruz said about the opportunities for this property. It brings Emerson not quite to the size of Robinson, about maybe a half the size of Robinson, right? It certainly gets it into that realm. It would essentially double the size of Emerson Point, wouldn't it?
A third more.
Sorry?
A third more.
A third more? How many acres is Emerson? One fifty?
Emerson is three hundred and sixty acres
Oh, wow.
From a bird eye view to what appears to be green versus water. But the landed acreage is around one hundred and seventy acres, one hundred and eighty.
Okay, so my buck fifty wasn't too far off. And then, and how many acres of wetland, put it this way, how many acres of uplands do we have out of this ninety-four acres? I'm just trying to come up, help myself with a valuation here.
Less than fifty.
Yeah. Less than fifty out of ninety-four? And it looks like there's some wetlands, you know, sort of jetting through the middle of the property also. Is that accurate? Okay.
It's been in range land for many years, and there are cattle out there, and there are ditches, so it's been drained, but let's just say it was very wet.
Yeah, Commissioner Cruz is whispering to me over here, it ain't worth sixteen million bucks. Oh, he's whispering to himself that it ain't worth sixteen million bucks. And, well, I mean, that's an obvious statement. It's worth more than two, which I see you have on there, but you're right. In-house, this is tough. I wouldn't, I don't know that I'd put too much effort into it, the valuation in-house. I think I would go out and get an appraisal. I'm sort of salivating, like I want it badly. Yeah, I think, listen, I think we all want it, right? It's just, you know, Commissioner Johnson used to say, the answer to every question is money, and that's where we are. It's just money.
I was going to add, so does the state of Florida. For eighteen years, this has been on their buy list and have been unable to make headway with the property owners.
So talk to me about that, Charlie, because, you know, you helped bring state of Florida, you know, Florida Forever monies into Emerson Point to purchase that. Seventy-five percent of the money for Emerson Point purchase was Florida Forever money.
Correct.
I need you to wave your magic wand and do that all over again here, get them to pay seventy-five percent of the bill. But seriously, realistically, what are our opportunities with Florida Forever and this property? I mean, in your honest opinion, which we value?
Well, certainly better than a project that is not surrounded by existing Florida holdings, state of Florida holdings, certainly better than a property that would have a new nomination coming forward, because this has been historically on the buy list, and it's been, I think, and will continue to be, much like Rattlesnake Key, a matter of value, whether or not the owner is willing to accept a conservation value for the property, or absent that, whether or not, if we establish a conservation value by appraisal following the state procedures, whether or not a second or third party is able to come forward and make up the difference, so to speak. But when we say, what is the value of this property, our answer has always been, it will be determined by the state appraisal process, and we work from there. We've spoken, undoubtedly, the company that represents the owner is moving to try to optimize their value in a speculative or real estate market. But there's certain risks that go with that. They may not get the rezoning density that they're seeking. They may not get the sewer services they would need to develop this property. There are a lot of ifs, ands, and buts. Getting insurance and developing coastal properties these days is getting more and more difficult.
Yeah.
So we're hoping that an appraisal will take all these things into account, and that the family who controls this property would be willing to give this consideration.
Yeah. And good comment about sewer services, because sewer has made it out to Amberwin via the city of Palmetto, even though it's unincorporated Manatee County.
Right.
So sewer is essentially available. I mean, it's virtually up to the property. Okay, so our chances are much better than average.
Of course, yes, they are very much so.
Okay. That makes me feel good. No one else is on the board. Commissioner Baugh or Ron, do you have any comments?
None.
Commissioner Ron?
I'm on meeting. No, I don't, sir, but I will tell you this. Last week, I had a great sit-down with Charlie and the staff on everything LMAC, and I would highly recommend that the other commissioners do it, too. It was very informative about the process, how it works, about the properties that are coming up. So I think that might be a good thing to have, a monthly briefing with the LMAC team. That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Should we move on, look at the other two, and then come back to voting? Is there one other? I'm sorry. He's been bringing them to us in threes. I'm a creature of habit.
Right.
Okay, so let's move on to the second one, and then we'll, give us a chance to sort of percolate, and then we'll come back to this. Okay.
I do have a disclosure. I live on Sneed Island. I live within a mile of this proposed property, and as an active part of the community, I have been hearing from neighbors asking, you know, what was going on, and so.
You should see our inboxes. We're aware.
Yes, sir. So when I answer them, I answer via my work email or my work text, so it's all public record. Sorry, guys. All right, so our second of the two properties today is the Mix and Fruit Farm, and this was actually nominated as a stormwater park. And it's a very unique opportunity in that this, you know, wouldn't really be considered for its natural resources in and of itself, the habitat rarity, the habitat quality, or the connectivity. It's within an urban area, but it does provide an outstanding opportunity for improving water quality and also mitigating for flood. So this property is already part of a study that's been going on with our Public Works Department and Southwest Florida Water Management, looking at exactly those things. It is a strong candidate to receive funds for improving flood and water quality. They don't know exactly what that will be yet, but within a month or two, we'll probably have the results of the study that would tell us more specifically how the property would work, and perhaps how much it would cost, and how much of a cost share from Water Management District there would be. So very timely nomination for sure. There is fifteen hundred feet along Glen Creek that winds through the property. It's, you know, essentially channelized, and as a historic orange grove, you know, there are drains that go into it. The, let's see, I feel like I'm missing something. Okay, so I think I can move to the next slide. So it is a thirty-nine acre site. The pictures up top here are from the Mix and Fruit Farm website, although we did do a site visit like wheat last week, and our photographs from the site visit are on the dashboard, so anyone can see them. There's a large warehouse in the southwest corner, and there's an organization called City Serve that I believe you'll hear from today. They're here, and they're going to tell you about what they do, and they have an interest in purchasing the four acres around that warehouse to continue the work that they do to serve those. the four acres around that warehouse to continue the work that they do to serve those in need with the products that they receive, the merchandise that they receive. There's also a restaurant and a gift shop that's in that warehouse. Right now, City Serve is using one corner of that warehouse, but they have an interest in buying it and expanding to use the entire building. There's also a playground, there are tram tours, you can do field trips, summer camps. It's a great place to explore as an adult and especially as a kid. Many of us in the community know about our experiences or our kids' experiences there. I've been hearing a lot about that lately. There's also a wildlife rehabilitation on-site. They have a number of different animals that you can see, some of them hold in touch. There's a wedding venue that is revenue generating. I believe Janet McSon will probably tell you more about that, but for instance, I think it's in the order of 7,000 rental for the venue. They have a home on-site along the southern border that they run out for the guests of the wedding and they are flexible in whether they would sell the home with or without the property. We could go either way on this one. There's also a lot of family and agricultural history there that is certainly worth preserving in and of itself. So as far as this proposed stormwater park, in addition to those features that we just talked, I just mentioned, there could be some trails woven through. The image that you see was provided by the nominator, Damon Moore, and it shows some areas that could be water with trails going through. These are very popular for bird watching. There's a stormwater park in Sarasota County that's gotten a lot of attention and is very popular lately, has been very successful. There could also be environmental education, could continue field trips for those. And so that's the overview. Let's see.
You mentioned the home.
The home, yes, so the home could be part of the acquisition or excluded from the acquisition. It's a lovely home. And there are pictures of the inside on the Realtor's website. So I did skip. The in-house value opinion that was done for this property, it was based on vacant lands, so it doesn't consider the improvements that are there, but it is about $10, $11 million. The current ask price is $15 million. So in talking with the owner, I think we have a reasonable agreement that we could come to between the vacant land in-house value opinion estimate and what they expect from the property. So I think we have a very promising opportunity here to work with this, the owner, and create some value to our community in terms of water quality and flooding. One more note, the development of Tropicana and the areas around it was done before 1980 when the stormwater rules went into place. And so there's really not any stormwater treatment that's happening for those areas. And adding stormwater treatment into this site, collecting water from the areas upstream could be a benefit for water quality downstream. Alyssa's here for any specific questions about that.
And I was also going to mention that there's anecdotal reasons for stormwater quantity control following the construction of the 301 bypass. It seems that it changed the topography sufficiently enough that there was an immediate increase in storm flow through the properties, both when it was a grove and now the current farm. And so there's some makeup there perhaps that needs to be done at this property location Insofar that this is more of a unique property, not so much for its conservation value, but also for its combined stormwater control, I think it probably bears an opportunity to give the representatives in the Mixon family here an opportunity to speak perhaps in more detail than would normally be offered in a three-minute moment since it is their property.
Yeah.
And perhaps we could entertain and ask them to approach as well if they were willing.
Okay, before we do that, though, we do have some commissioners on the board and really before we get started at all, this is very good. And I just wanted to say to Deborah, not just today, but the previous properties, you do a great job of laying these out. I think she does a great job of laying these out, pros, cons, visuals, you know, everything. I really, I enjoy these and I feel like I, most of us kind of know these, you know, where they are, have been on the properties anyway, but we don't think of it necessarily in these terms. And so, anyway, I just think you do a really good job of the way you lay these out, pros, cons, everything.
Thank you, sir.
Cruz, Ballard, and I'll take myself off the board. Cruz and Ballard.
Here's my question. I mean, it's a great property and honestly, it's, there's a lot of development going on there, not a lot of parks there. I think there's a lot of opportunity for this property. I think valuing it based upon what's currently there is probably a little, it's not really how I would value it since the stuff that's there isn't really the concept of the acquisition in the first place. We're not buying buildings with environmental land funds, so valuing where else. And if City Serve comes and they're buying that four acres, that's pretty much taking up that portion anyway, so it's not really proportional if you're going to value the entirety of it inclusive of wedding venues and warehouses and all these other spaces that aren't really part of a stormwater park per se. It's two different values. There's the usable commercial piece and then there's the excess orange grove piece, which is more on lines of what we're looking at. My question here is, why does this fall under you? Like, this, to me, falls under two different buckets, neither which are this set of funds. I'm 100% on board with moving forward, let me clarify that.
Yeah.
100% on board with looking into this. But it sounds to me like this could be used for one of two things. Utility funds because they need stormwater and things that nature and we have funds for that in theory. I'm sure Evan doesn't want me to say that out loud, but that's the intent of it. It's not environmental, we're not protecting a turtle or anything with this, we're not fixing water quality. It's stormwater, which is utilities and they purchase land for that purpose. Or you look at it and say, "There's that whole big project that was built right next to it and then you've got other house coming on, you've got the roundabout coming and the 7-Eleven and there's more development encroaching this direction. Let's lock down a piece where we can have a nice Central Park-type area to retain some green space for the citizens," and that's parks. Both of those have a good use, both of those I'm on board with looking at this property forward. My question is, how in your mind is this, are we just looking for pockets of money to buy something? Or is this truly, in light of it, I mean, don't forget, you just proposed an expansion of Emerson Point. I just mentioned a wildlife corridor. Those are, in my mind, real environmental land fund-type funds when you're talking about a $50 million bucket. This, to me, doesn't seem like it's in the heart of those types of projects in terms of being environmentally sensitive land for use of that fund. And I want to make sure, in light of the fact that it's a very finite amount of dollars, that we're using those $50 million where they should be, because once they're gone, they're gone.
Right.
Whereas once, you know, with the utility dollars and park dollars, we've got those funds, whether it be through impact fees or rates or bonding, to still purchase the same property at the same price, but make sure we're purchasing it out of the right bucket of money before we deplete this one.
Right.
Just again, like, and you and I have talked about it and you disagreed with my sentiment and I wasn't saying it negatively, I was just saying, you know, we're kind of on a first-come, first-served basis here as they're being presented and you've explained that's not the case. But once this goes, if it's really $10 to $15 million and we don't have a sufficient amount of matching funds, that's a meaningful percentage. I'm on board with acquiring, I think it's a good use of funds. I just don't know if this is the right funds for that.
Well, if you would like to find other funds to use to purchase this, you would not hurt my feelings at all, that would be wonderful. Maybe we're just a catalyst. No, absolutely, so.
I get the jest, but it's an honest question. We have a checklist of what qualifies for environmental land.
Right.
This, to me, doesn't feel like it checks off the number. Like, if we were looking at a bunch of nonprofits with children's services, they rank everything before they bring them back to us. Here, we rank them on a one-by-one basis and it's like, did it check a box? Okay, what's presented because it was presented.
And so using the checklist that's on your screen now, you know, if we look at these four basic criteria, three of the four, no. We are getting water resource improvement from our basic LMAC criteria. Now, the bottom bullets are specifically from that referendum language. And so drinking water, no. Water quality, yes, because in addition, see, enhancing these stormwater treatment are opportunities for water quality, for biological improvements, to put plants down and create habitat that attract birds and other wildlife. So that's sort of an add-in that we anticipate having funding sources to help with. You're still valid, I completely understand, just looking at the checklist. So we have the stormwater runoff and, you know, it is going to, you know, preserve some fish habitat and provide parks.
Preserve fish habitat?
Well, if you consider an improvement of water quality downstream and that fish do live in some streams, yes.
You could literally bet my house that check.
Well, okay. So, and that is also why we put this consideration here about the stormwater runoff pollution. So I don't think the funds from the referendum apply toward making all the improvements. And the concept was that we would work together with Public Works and other funding sources to pull this off, that perhaps the environmental millage would be used for the land purchase and then other funds would be used for the improvements.
And used for the land purchase in concert with the Public Works purpose of finding a stormwater outlet in this area, in this watershed. I think we are sponsoring, we're sponsoring this application as much for its environmental values as we see them and we would look to our utilities, Public Stormwater Program partners to help us with the stormwater quantity flooding protections.
And when you bring it back, that'll be kind of laid out in terms of how this funding would work when we make an actual final decision.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard?
So I think that Commissioner Cruz's comments are very well-taken. That being said, I agree with Commissioner Cruz that this is a really important piece of land for Manatee County. I think that it's in my district. We are very, very low on parks, places for kids in this area. It's developing quickly and we have the opportunity to save a beautiful swath of land right in the middle of this urban area. To have a green space, I think, is hugely important for the people who live here and who live in District 2 and, you know, deserve a park as much as people, you know, up in Terraceea or out in Parrish. And we have less of an opportunity for that. We have less of an opportunity for that in District 2 because we're built up, it's infill. So I would like, I would like to see every option explored for how the county can utilize this property. Whether that purchase is through LMAC, whether it's in conjunction with utilities, with parks, I would like to see every option explored because I do, I do think it's very important and it would be a shame just to see, I think it's kind of that last remaining swath that we have in this area. And also, there is significant, significant flooding in this area on 27th. You cannot improve that road in a way that's going to help deal with that flooding. Improving the water quality downstream, I think, is a wonderful, laudable goal. And so I'm really excited to see this come forward and I will definitely vote to move it forward and just encourage any way that we can try to acquire this property.
Thank you, ma'am. Van Austin Bridge and Satcher are next on the board. Charlie, a couple of quick questions. One is going to be, I'm going to throw you, well, I guess I'm going to give you a suggestion first. I like Cruz and Ballard's ideas of trying to bring in utilities money, I think Public Works money, because Public Works is stormwater, not utilities, so I throw that in there. And then, lastly, you learn a lot of interesting things when you have this job. So there are, for those of you in the public, there actually are elevation variables in Florida despite, you know, you don't think the land, we have that much elevation difference in our land, but we actually do. So my question would be is, what is the elevation of this Mixon property in terms of 27th? I mean, how much of 27th really could drain into this property? Because we're not, you know, for those of you in the audience, what I'm saying is, we're not pumping water uphill, so it's going to, it's all gravity flow, so it's going to have to flow downhill. So is this a collection point?
Excuse me, the Glen Creek, Glen Creek, thank goodness.
Glen Creek.
The Glen Creek watershed study is ongoing to answer that very question.
Okay, so we're not there yet.
Thank you.
And then, throw a suggestion out there. The city of Bradenton is sort of shaped like a jigsaw puzzle, the city limits, right? Which is to the annoyance of them as well as us. But it's sort of all around this property and so there's going to be a net benefit to the city of Bradenton Public Works as well. So if we're cost-sharing, right? Okay, if we're cost-sharing, you know, call Gene Brown up and see what we can get out of them while we're at it. I'm interested in this. It's not like my, I love the property, right? Obviously, we all love the Mixons. I kind of share some of Commissioner Cruz's thoughts in that, man, it's a lot of money, it's a significant chunk of a fixed pot of money that we have. I would, you know, of the two that we're looking at today, I would much rather put the money into Emerson because I think it goes more towards what people thought they were voting for when they approved the millage. But that said, I'm not committing to Emerson yet because it's all about money and it's $16 million and we are way far apart. So.
There is a large family of institutional partners that are interested in this property as well.
I'm sure.
As it drains to the Braden River, joins with the Manatee, this is in the Tampa Bay Estuary Program site and also in the Sarasota Bay Estuary Program site. So work here to incorporate water quality improvements, which could be supported, would be supported by them financially. The Water Management District also has an interest in not only funding the study, but oftentimes when the study is approved by the district, then projects flow from that, from district funds to help us make the construction changes that we want. And it may not, it may be that the Glen Creek watershed requires this fix at this spot and also other work, both upstream and downstream. So it would be part of a comprehensive flood protection program.
Okay, so I'm likely to vote yes to move forward with both of these, however, knowing that I am a long way from a yes on final approval on either of them. Emerson Point is simply a money issue, I think. This one is also a money issue, but I want to see where all that money is going to come from. The valuation is justified on this property, I'm not going to lie to you on that. It's developable land that can probably annex into the city of Bradenton, which is going to greatly increase their density and so they're going to call for a stiff price and they're ultimately going to get it. I'm aware of that and we may not have the funds to buy it. Commissioner Satcher and then Commissioner Baugh or Commissioner Ron, would you like to be on the board?
No, sir, Mr. Chair, I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
I'm good, sir, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Satcher, you carry us out here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask you to go back to the slide with the checklist.
Okay, sure.
Explain to me the very last one on the referendum language, so this would be what people actually voted for in 2020. The very last one, provision of parks. Is the idea, I mean, I need to take a look at the referendum itself, but is the idea behind that, that you could take this LMAC money, the funds, buy, you know, a larger parcel with the knowledge that you're also going to take a portion of that and provide it for parks later or am I missing, what is that supposed to mean?
Well, if I can help answer that, that was designed around the concept that we're currently working with at Bennett Park.
At what?
That was designed around a concept we were working with at Bennett Park, where portions of that property provide a true environmental value, water quality and habitat for the Manatee River and we work it as such. There are other portions of that property that provide open space for athletic fields, playgrounds and parking. And parks, in this case, sports and leisure services, would be supporting that. So when the concept of parks was introduced with this referendum, it was in mind with conservation-type activities and passive activities in a park-like setting. It was not discussed in the literature or in the frequently asked questions that led up to the vote to indicate that we were offering that this would allow us to purchase parks for athletic purposes, baseball, football, soccer and swimming pools. But it was designed to, in areas where a conservation park, a good example is Conservancy Park in Palmeir, which is truly a park-like setting for conservation. There's, that was one example. Or where we had a larger piece of land which could provide both. And looking then- And looking then, in those circumstances, where the environmental millage could help acquire those sections and improve those properties for habitat and, and passive trail recreation like Emerson Point may offer us if we acquire that. But, trying to, trying to draw that separation line, because, because truly, we have many millions of dollars of future parks that we want to pursue. But, we were hoping that, and I believe the voters were comforted by the fact that, that the dialogue around the referendum was that when we speak about parks for environmental lands, it was going to be conservation, habitat, water quality, and educational pursuits through those natural areas. Why Mixon has, gives that opportunity to us here is because, as, as, as has been mentioned, there is very limited opportunity for that type of environmental passive pursuit in and around, what will be in and around the stormwater improvements that are there. We don't, we, we would not intend to leave a rectangular stormwater pond that you might see along a major road improvement. But we would, we would spend environmental millage to really upgrade the, the habitat value of that water feature, provide educational interpretation of that water feature, conduct those tours and, and park visits from schoolkids and our own, our own customers and clients to learn about how nature improves an urban watershed. And that, that's what I, probably answered your question.
So, like on this property, I mean, the, the wedding venue, I mean, we wouldn't be looking to, you know, something that would be useful either as park or as part of your conservation. I mean, you're not going to take something like that and tear it down when it should fit pretty well into one of the two visions.
Correct.
That exist, right? So, we're not going to be...
Yes, in fact, in fact, we have wedding venues at Robinson Reserve.
Right.
For that very purpose.
So, I, I mean, I just see, there's a lot of different possibilities, and I don't necessarily know that it'll come together perfectly, but I could definitely see it, you know, coming together well. And I, and I will just say, reading through the list of what the voters voted for, I mean, there's a lot that does, it is on the list. Water quality protections on the list, prevention of stormwater runoff pollution is on the list. You know, the fish habitat might be a stretch. And then, you know, and then I'm asking the question about whether or not provision of parks, I, I don't know exactly what that sentence means. But those other two, you know, this would definitely seem like it might fit the bill, so I think it's def, at least worth looking further into as we move forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Should we hear from Dean and Janet Mixon at this time? Board members? Okay.
Big mistake for him is letting me go first, because I hardly ever let go. We are really excited about the possibility of having this, our property end up being a park. And we didn't even, I mean, we always wanted something like that, but, you know, we get hit with developers that just want to tear everything down. But, this has been in Dean's family for 84 years, and I've been a part of it for the last 20. And, you know, he's the farmer, and I'm the educator. I have my doctorate in, in education, and I have a doctorate in memory-making. If you ask my family, I'm the best memory-maker. And that was what our prayer was when we, when we bought the family out, we, you know, we, the, the farm had suffered, we had 350 acres and lost most of it to insects because of NAFTA. And we felt like with the last part of our property, we wanted to make memories. We wanted people to learn. I, my fear was that as young children, they, they don't understand that oranges actually come from trees, and you squeeze them. And so, we've made, you know, we do tours, we added the tram tour, and we added this stuff to help people to understand a farm. Because if you've noticed, 20 years ago, there were 350 small farmers like us in Florida that did citrus. There are 14 right now. They're all going away. But we could still use the property as someplace that people can learn about farming and agriculture, doing a, a place where people could actually have their own gardens. And there's, you know, the bamboo, which is out there, is 30% more oxygen, and having a class that meets out there with their little blankets, and it's just amazing. If you haven't walked and been out there in that bamboo, it's amazing. And the farmhouse, yes, we're willing to keep it, but I think they could use it for offices. Or it could be a, a small museum, because we have a lot of the Mixon memories. Mixon property was, we have the original abstract of our property, and in 1849, the United States government sold this property to Joseph Braden. It's like one of the first parts of Bradenton. It's how Bradenton started. And there's not a lot of areas, like Amanda's saying, that could be a park. But this is like part of the beginning, and we would love to be a part of helping that happen. For the last couple of years, our churches used our building for a thing called City Serve. And like I said, 20 years ago, Dean and I prayed about what to do to bless our community, and part of it was to add the tours and to add things that would make memories for people. And City Serve is an amazing thing. They just have filled up our plant, and they just give it away. It's the people that need it, to have, and to be a part of something like that, to, to see couches and bedding and all kinds of stuff be, coming in and then blessing people with it, has been an amazing thing. And so, if we could section off that little four acres in the corner, I mean, they're willing to buy that ahead of you. But we, we just feel like, and the animals, I mean, he'd love to stay there with his animals and be a part of educating kids and families as to what, what animals are here, what animals, what happens to animals when they fly down in the middle of the street. And, and so, there's just so much here. And like they said, the wedding area does get about $6,500 just to rent the space. So, it could be a place where actual money can be made on this. The playground, we've had corporate, corporate parties that rent both the, both the facilities. So, it could continue being a blessing to all those people in our community, because once it becomes a, a subdivision, nobody's allowed on that except unless you live in there. And so, the idea of making a place where it's still blessing people is just, would be a, a blessing to us. And you were talking about the storm stuff. Oh, we have wells, we have three wells, two of them are 600 feet and one a thousand feet. We have springs in, in the property, and we have a koi pond with 400 fish. George. It's got fish. We put in five, so they just, just appeared. And now they're all there, and it's got turtles. And, and that is something the kids, I mean, people love to see those fish and the turtles, and it's just absolutely beautiful out there. And he's going to talk about something.
You want me to talk?
Yeah. Just for a second.
She got her PhD, and I, I've got mine pounding hard dirt, because I've been, been there for all my life, and...
Who needed to state your first and last name for the record?
I'm Dean Mixon.
Thank you.
Been here all my life in Manatee County. She said, "We're concerned with our, with the, the legacy that we pass. We'd really like, would like to see it used," she said, "for the educational purposes and, and for families." That's been top of our list from the beginning. Like I said, my, my grandfather and grandmother started it, moved there in 19, moved to Manatee County in 1917. And so, we've seen a lot of the, the issues. We talked about some of the flood issues. In my lifetime, I've only seen that canal out of its banks maybe twice. And, and it was at times when the whole county was dealing with other flooding areas, too. But, we talked about the 27th Street flooding. Most of that is to the north of our property. I don't think that ours would, would, would take care of any of that, or that Glen Creek Canal would, would handle any of that. The improvements that were made several years ago, there's another canal that runs about halfway between us and 64, that helps some of it, but towards 64, there's, it doesn't take much of a rain to flood there, and it's always been a problem. But anyway, like I said, we, we do have the, the irrigation in there that, at one time, all 350 acres were connected underground, and we have a tap to the city of Bradenton reclaim water that we have used for 25 years or so now that has irrigation water. So, we do, are conserving that way. If you opened any other questions, you might have, as far as my knowledge or other...
Didn't they put drains in?
Yeah, there's, she was talking about drainage on 26th Avenue. Charlie talked about the flood that we had, it took out about 20 acres of our, of our grove. That was when the 301 bypass was put in, and you dug the reservoir on the end of 15th, 15th Street and the end of 26th Avenue that took care of most of that problem. We haven't had that, that kind of issue since that was done. But also, those floods and so forth were done when it was all farmland, and everything around us was farmland. Now, you've got 1,000 houses to, to the west of us, and another 1,000, 1,200 being built on the McClure property to the east of us. And so, it's a whole lot different issue as far as your, your rapid runoff. And so, something's going to be needed in that area to take, take care of that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you both. Lived here my entire life as well, and went to Mixon's when I was a kid, so I know the property, I know the property well, I know the history of the property as well. And I would love to see it be some kind of a public asset. So, we don't have anyone else on the board. Commissioner Baugh, Commissioner Cruz, if you would like to, to speak before we go to public comment, speak up. Otherwise, we'll go to public comment now. Is there anyone with that?
I think you meant Ron.
Did I say Cruz? I'm sorry. I meant Ron. So, we'll go to public comment.
Appreciate you checking in.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll go to public comment, and you can, when you come forward, you can speak on either of these two proposals. I encourage you, if you drove down here, come up and speak, by all means. You'll have three minutes. When you reach the podium, just state your first and your last name, tell us your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Sir?
Glenn Jableen in Manatee County. So, I'll, I'll speak on both, actually. Emerson Point, if they're going to be 16 million dollars, right? You can have them donate the other four. He's going to have to, he's going to have to pay the 20% anyway, so if we just come up with 800,000, he can take the tax write-off. The other thing I'd be wary of in that contract, it says, have, can develop to the other 80 houses. Now, you read the emails, they don't want any housing there. So, I would be cautious in putting in that language if you do move forward on that deal. You don't want no part of that development, because it can come back and bite you negligis maximus. But, the, the other thing is, is Mixon, for sure, for sure. Utilities money, stormwater money, George, you made some great points. They have deep pockets, they're like FP now, they never run out of money, and those funds are reoccurring. So, you can, you can, you can, you can make this deal work. The, the private partnership with, with the, the other organizations are going to make that park a winner, like, like Amanda said, there's not much around there as far as parks are concerned. So, that should be, that should be a big plus. You have to take that into consideration. And for them, you know, they could, they could sell it off to developer, they've been approached by several of them. They can get a lot more money than what they're asking, but that's not the legacy they want to leave. It's a 106-year history there. That's what they want to leave, and that, and that has value. That has added value to the property, as far as I'm concerned. So, both are worthy, Mixon for sure. I would encourage us to move forward to do a, a deep dive on it. And a couple of housekeeping things. I would, I would encourage this board that when we have items like this, and you have emails, and you have people from the church and other folks that want to talk, you would, you would consider a time certain. Would be, I think, beneficial to all the people that show up, you know, that want to come here. If there's a time certain, I think you'd have a better, better, a better showing. You know, Jack had to leave, he had a chiropractor practice, but he was all day here waiting to speak on this subject matter. So, if he knew at time certain that, hey, 3 o'clock, you can be there, well, then he wouldn't have drove down here. I would drive down here, but he wouldn't have. So, I appreciate that. That's about it. One other thing, George, thank you so much for coming out to the open house Saturday. Meant a lot to my community, and what you said was all good. They can't believe that they had our at-large commissioner at my open house again. Thank you. Amen.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon. My name is Sue Revel. I've been a resident of Manatee County for 46 years, 36 of those on Sneed Island. I come to speak specifically about the Emerson Point Preserve purchase. I serve as president of the Sneed Island Community Association, and I represent the approximate 310 residents, homeowners, and businesses that are on Sneed Island. I would note that we are not an HOA, but we are a voluntary community association, which was chartered in 1962, and it has remained continuously active for all of those years. What brings me here today is, is I, I believe, and I, with my hope, that I'm preaching to the choir here, about the purchase, about the potential for this purchase. Among the goals of our association is stated in our bylaws, they remain very clear, that we stand united in our active support of the conservation of the island, its natural resources, including the surrounding waters. This might explain why your inboxes have been so full. The, as a sidebar here, the next item on our goals and, and objectives of the association is to resist all efforts by anyone to promote further annexation of Sneed Island by the city of Palmetto. We'll leave that for another day. But, on behalf of all, all of the homeowners and residents, I wholeheartedly, and I believe you will approve and accept and applaud the recommendation of the 17-member LMAC. And just a thought, when's, when's the last time we had 17 members of a citizen advisory vote, board vote unanimously? I mean, that just never happens. But, as Deborah mentioned, the location of this property, by virtue of its location on Terraceea Bay, it represents a very small piece of the remaining undeveloped shoreline of one of Florida's most heavily populated watersheds, which all the more reason to keep this in conservation. And as we all know, our community and these areas are being, are, are overpopulated, and more so every single day. So, as you've heard from staff, it meets all the criteria for conservation and the most wonderful potential for expanding this park, the, the Emerson Point Preserve, which I think you all know what a, a piece of environmentally precious land. So, to sum it all up, let's find the money. I know we can, and I think you all do, too. Have a good day.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. First and last name, county of residence? You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Kristen Becknell. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm one of the executive pastors at Bayside Community Church and a Manatee County resident for almost 20 years. And I just thank you for the opportunity to take a minute and share the incredible impact that the Mixon Warehouse has been able to have on our community through Bayside. You see, for the past two years, Bayside has used the Mixon Warehouse for a community outreach that we call City Serve. The mission of City Serve is to distribute resources into the local community and then into other churches as well to directly support individuals and families that are in need. It's a nonprofit volunteer ministry, and basically what we do is we receive new unused goods from Amazon and other big box retailers that they no longer want or need, and then in turn, we take that, and then we distribute that out freely directly into the community. In the past year, just to give you a snapshot of the impact, we've impacted 3,040 individuals and have distributed $742,000 of goods and kind directly into Manatee County through City Serve. And so, for this outreach to operate, we have used approximately 15,000 square feet of the Mixon Warehouse, but we are in need of 60,000 square feet in order to facilitate the amount of goods and products that are coming in so that we can distribute them into our community. We understand what the county is, is considering this Mixon property for a park and the community outreach, and so, we, Bayside Community Church, we're interested in purchasing, as Janet mentioned, the four acres on the corner of 26th Avenue and 27th Street from the Mixons. We understand that it needs a new roof and many other repairs, but our desire in keeping the building as is, is that not only does it help our local community through the City Serve outreach, but it also helps to preserve the Mixon legacy. Serve outreach, but it also helps to preserve the Mixon legacy that we all know and love so well. I think about it and as Janet mentioned, for 84 years, people have come to that area to make some kind of memory. I think about moving here and I think about my first time experiencing the orange ice cream, which is our favorite. And then just introducing it to our son, who's now 12. And, and I know you all have those different things that are connected as well. And so the county purchasing the property and then allowing Bayside to purchase these four acres on the corner from the Mixons, it would allow us to continue helping our community through City Serve as well as keep the Mixon legacy of blessing the community for years to come. So our ask is that you would assist in purchasing this property and allow Bayside to purchase those four acres on the corner from the Mixons. So I thank you so much for your time, for you guys' consideration and honestly, for all you do to make our county so incredible to live in. God bless you.
And well timed, Pastor. Yeah. It's hard to, hard to compete with. Sir, I, I think you probably know the routine.
Hello, my name is Damon Moore. My county of residence is Hillsborough County. I'm here to speak in favor of both the properties being considered right now. The first, I'll start with the Emerson Point annexation type looking property there. I think that one is a no-brainer. You guys all seem to get that. It has all the values. You guys already know that. The one thing I would comment on about that, and I think Commissioner, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, you kind of touched on this, I would suggest you get a formal wetland determination done before you move forward on the valuation of that. Because a lot of that open area, the open pasture area there is, more of it may come back as wetland than a lot of people might realize. And I think that's really going to sway the value one way or another. And I think that would be an important part as far as you guys being able to make a well-informed decision on that. The second one I would like to talk about is the Mixon property. I was the one who submitted the nomination to LMAC for that. We, you guys have touched on the water quality improvements, the flood enhancement projects. I was, you may have seen me make a face when you guys were laughing about the fisheries aspect of this project. This, it actually could be very well a highly valuable fisheries project. It's at the upper tidal reach of the, of Glen Creek and incorporated into this, this could serve as a juvenile snook and tarpon habitat, which is very similar to the way the Robinson Expansion Project was done, to the extent that that brought that project $8 million with the funding from outside agencies to be able to do that. Another thing along the lines of the wildlife value functions is this site is located within the core forage area of the county's only federally listed wood stork colony that's at the mouth of the Braden River there. This would provide a lot of nearby forage habitat for that federally listed species. And again, that ties in additional funding that can come in through other agencies to work with that. And then the other thing too is like you guys have said, like all this stuff comes into costs. Some of the things I think you should kind of recognize with, with both of these projects is there is an unprecedented amount of federal funding right now available for anything that has to do with coastal resiliency and flooding through the, the federal infrastructure bill. The state is making so much investment in resiliency funding. I think you guys are all aware of that. But most, these, both of these projects would be, you know, highly likely to receive funding through that. I mentioned the fisheries enhancement, listed species enhancement. And then the other one with the, the Mixon property to kind of keep in mind is that you're, you'll, you'll generate material that will be of value if you create a stormwater park there, whether it be clean fill that can be used for projects in other areas of the county or possibly even travertine limestone for artificial reefs or anything like that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Before the next person comes up, I'm just going to take a quick opportunity to say to, to new commissioners and those of you in the public that Damon Moore, Charlie Hunsiker, his brainchild was Robinson Preserve, but Damon Moore was the architect of Robinson Preserve and he's the one who like literally created it for us. And when he speaks about our ability to obtain funding from other sources for specific needs in the, in the ecosystem and in specific environmental needs that we have, he speaks from experience. The guy knows how to pull dollars out of thin air. Robinson was built for literally pennies on the dollar for the county. It's probably the greatest county asset we have, natural, as far as natural resources go. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak? Yes, ma'am. So first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Rita Bernat and I think I sent a, like didn't think I sent a note to all of you about today. But anyway, I am a resident of Manatee County and have been for 22 years. And in those 22 years, where have I lived? On Sneed Island. When we moved there, Sneed Island was just a dirt path going out to the end of the island there. I mean, it has so improved, it's so beautiful. I cannot even imagine you not considering it for expansion. And of course, Deborah and Sue and Charlie, we all know one another. We love our island. I don't know what I can say that can convince you more. And I know, Amanda, you feel the same way about the Mixon property that I, I do where I live. What I've seen from all of you and I've heard from each and every one of you today is very impressive. I have to say that I don't always feel like this when it comes to politics, but I know you guys will do the right thing. I know that we've got people working on our projects that know ins and outs of different things, which I certainly do not. But I just want to thank you for your consideration and all your work and efforts. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your thoughtful words. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on either of these two acquisitions? Okay, we're going to close public comment then, and Commissioners Bearden and Ballard are on the board. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for your comments. You know, I love both properties. I believe that if there's a will, there's a way. And I know that we're going to be working diligently to look at both of these properties. You know, I like the fact as well with Mixon Farms and what they have to offer. And I appreciate Bayside coming up and giving me their comments. You, you all have a special place in my heart, Pastor Bernard back there. We've had several conversations. And so there's just so many different benefits and different things that, you know, both of these properties have to offer. And I'm going to definitely look into what I can do or try to figure out a way, we as a board, figure out a way to possibly acquire these properties because they're, they're, they both serve their purpose. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
I, I agree that these are both very, very important properties and, and very worthy of, of our consideration and, and conservation. Mr. Moore, I just want to thank you so much for, for coming up and, and giving us a little bit more information than, than we could have realized about the potential impacts that, that conservation of, of the Mixon Fruit Farm could, could have on our community. Because there, there are things that obviously a lot of us wouldn't think about and it sounds like there, there are some great opportunities for, for federal monies there that, that maybe, maybe we as commissioners wouldn't know about or think about. So, so thank you so much for coming and, and sharing that and, and your wealth of experience. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Well said. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for coming and, you know, two really exciting projects. And each one of them is, is new, unique. You know, we talked about the one next Emerson and, but that, that location has, you know, three different district commissioners that are really, their districts are closely tied to that. I mean, that was in my district a year ago before the great divorce, no, before, before District 3 had to grow and, and needed more population. And then of course, right there close to District 2 as well. And, and we're looking for opportunities for each of those, you know, for good things for the whole county. And then of course, you know, the, the Mixons, it's wonderful to have you here with us. And someone mentioned, you know, you don't always like politics. And what's funny is we'll have a meeting, a whole meeting like this where we're talking about, you know, moving forward and spending, you know, obviously, you know, it's county funds or state funds in some cases that we're talking about working together with, but working hard to do something environmental or roads or et cetera. And then the very next meeting, someone will come up and, "You guys need to be working on," and then talk about all the things we just spent hours working on at the previous meeting. But I do appreciate also, echo the sentiment to Damon coming on what is now his own time after over two decades, right? One decade with Manatee County, anyway, making a big difference here and then now enjoying semi-retirement. So appreciate him coming and appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron, do you want to make any comments, sir?
Yes, sir. I'd be, I agree with everything everybody said. These two properties are important to Manatee County. I'd like to thank the Mixons for coming forward, all they've done for this community over the last 80 years, plus years. But I'm, I'm in support of whatever we need to do to help get both these properties moving forward and do diligence done. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Baugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say that it's nice to see Damon there and, you know, I had the honor of working with him for several years and when he speaks, I listen. So I'm looking forward to bringing both of these properties on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. And I'll just close it out and like everyone else, Damon, thank you for taking your own time to come down here and, and speak to us. We appreciate it. And thank all of you for coming out as well. Charlie, I'm going to be supporting both of these. You've, you've kind of got all of our eyes really big on both of them with potential. But we're leaning on you to, to find alternative funding sources for both. Particularly the, when it comes to the, the appraisal and evaluation, Sneed Island is the one that's really standing out. I want it, don't get me wrong, but my background's in real estate. I never go into it emotionally. If he doesn't get up off that price and you can't come to him with a, a reasonable appraisal and that they're not willing to come down, I'm not going to, it's not my money. You know, I mean, it's, it's all, you know, the, the want is there and, and if it's my money, I can overpay for something with my money, but it's not my money. So no matter how badly I want it, I'm not, you know, they may, you know, the rest of them may vote for it, but I'm not going to vote to purchase something that's, that's exorbitantly overpriced. So we've got to find a way to, to bring him down or her, whoever it is that owns that down to a reasonable market value for that property. As badly as we want it, we're not going to grossly overpay for that property. We're not going to overpay for that property at all. So we, we're kind of leaning on you to find alternative funding sources and to, to get these folks to, to reasonable prices. So.
Hopefully, excuse me, ma'am, Mr. Chairman, that hopefully the combination of two might get us to the finish.
Yes, sir. All right. We've held public comment. There's no one on the board for any further discussion. There is a motion by Commissioner Cruz to approve both items. So the, the motion has been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We can cast our votes now. Commissioner Baugh, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioners Baugh and Ron vote yes, as do the rest of us. So it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero, Madam Clerk.
Chairman, that is the recommended motion.
This, this is the recommended motion. Yes, ma'am. Passes seven to zero. Okay. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate, well, you can, happy to stay if you like, but, but, but thank you all for coming down for those items. That was the last item on today's agenda, so we can just jump right into Commissioner comments. Commissioner Thatcher, I don't remember where we started. Do you? Are you first or not?
I have one last question. We start with two.
Okay, we can start with two. Commissioner Ballard.
No comments today, but a, a rousing and great discussion on, on LMAC. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Hey, folks, as you, as you exit, the meeting is still, as you exit, folks, the meeting is still underway. Thank you. There are no comments from District 3. District 4, Mr. Ron, Commissioner Ron, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Five, Commissioner Baugh.
None.
Six. Bearden, no. Seven, Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, just, just a quick reminder, I've been doing monthly town halls at the various libraries. The next one is tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Braden River Library. So if you're around and want to ask a question or tell me something you want me to know, then by all means, come on down.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And Commissioner 1, actually Commissioner 1, District 1, Commissioner Thatcher.
One in your heart. No comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. County Attorney?
No, sir.
Mr. Washington?
No, sir.
All right. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.